Welcome to the regular town council meeting, the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, November 6th, 2023. May we, uh, the meeting is now called a order. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Ogerton. Councilmember Bunch.
Here.
Councilmember Elkema. Councilmember McGuire. Councilmember Rhodes. Vice Mayor Roy. Mayor Morris.
Here. First item on the agenda is, uh, we'll save the pledge allegiance until we, uh, return. The first item is the executive session, council discussion consultation, direction to and legal advice from the town attorney pursuant to ARS, section thirty-eight dash four thirty-one dot zero three, uh, capital A three, and capital A four regarding possible amendments to QT Water Service Agreement. Is there a motion to move to executive session?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We're now at executive session. Yeah, welcome to the regular town council meeting, the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, for Monday, uh, November the sixth, 2023. Um, we already had the roll call, so we'll do the pledge allegiance. We have with us the acting superintendent of CCUSD, Bill Dolizel. Would you lead us, please, Bill?
Pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Bill. In public announcements, uh, for those that attended Taste of Cave Creek, I think it was an outstanding success. The food was amazing. And it was a really good turnout and the crowds were very happy and very well behaved. Does anyone else on council have a public announcement?
Yeah, for those who you attended the Dark Sky event, that's the best one that they've had. Um, it was really worth the effort if you get a chance to go next year when they, they do it again.
Uh, one minor addition to that, uh, they do have their own five oh one C three now, which is fabulous. So people can make donations and they're tax deductible.
And it drew a lot of people in the Cave Creek. That was great to see. Helps to define Cave Creek.
Yeah, there were about six hundred people that attended. If the parking lot was full, everything went well. It was easy in, easy accidents. You get a chance to do it next year. It's well worth the effort.
Call the public?
Marta Bello.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. My daughter was violently attacked on the twenty-eighth of October after the pub crawl at the Roadhouse. And she's, she received broken nose, three places, emotionally distraught, our whole family's distraught. We had, when that happened, the police asked if she wanted to press charges and she said no. So on Monday, she called and they said the officers that were there will be here, um, Thursday. Called in, so she called Thursday. She got deputy, some deputy who gave her the badge numbers of the officers that were there. He said, we would have them call you back. She called Friday. She called Saturday. I sent a message to the marshal, the town marshal. He finally called me back this morning and said, I am so sorry. But that's not my jurisdiction. I'll get the commander in chief to, to check this out. So here we are. Six o'clock, he was supposed to, he said, I can guarantee someone call you today. No one's called today. Six o'clock, I don't know, we'll call later, but my consensus here is I don't, I don't think this town is safe and we can't have a police that will respond to our calls. And, 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 and the other thing is when we have these events, like something like the pub crawl, it needs, like they shouldn't go to two o'clock in the morning. I think it should stop like twelve. And I think that it should start at the worst bars, like the biker bars and ending like Big Earl's where it's calm down. Because by that time, everybody is intoxicated. And I think there should be added security. The, you know, these, these bars didn't have security that night. Um, if there was security, my daughter would have not savagedly beaten. It's, it's, it's a viral video right now. But that's, I hope that she gets justice. This girl needs to be charged and the process hasn't started yet because the police haven't contacted my daughter. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I, I think I expressed, I can speak for everybody up here. We're just embarrassed that it happened in our town and, and we wish her the very best and, uh, and we're sorry for your pain.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, the town manager, would you look into that, please, and get, get back to us?
Thank you. Blair Roberts.
Excuse me, I'm very emotional about this, but I am a twenty-four year resident. I'm a mom of two. I'm a local business owner and I'm just shocked about this. I was with them that night. She's my best friend and then she got a fractured nose. And she's suffering emotional abuse right now. But I wrote this and I said, as I sit here, I'm wondering what my town has turned into after twenty-four years of living here. I moved here because of the charm of this place. I used to leave my doors unlocked. I feel very comfortable going out. But after the Halloween pub, and I'm a fourth time attendee of it, I'm very disheartened by our east side of our town. My best friend got attacked by another woman for no reason. No one helped her. They just watched and videotaped it. No one helped her off the ground after she was hurt and no one called nine one one after they saw it happen. She had to call it herself. I feel like we've lost our empathy. Do we have a heart? Do we have any charm? Or is this just a place people come to drink? Are, this is the place we should, this has become a violent place in the evening and every, I posted the video and I posted about this and people said to me, I don't go to the east side of our town after seven because of this. They said this happens week, every weekend. So again, I ask where our charm has led. Uh, we were all ready to go out on Saturday night, dressed up in our costumes. I'm a wine bar kind of girl. I normally don't go to bars like this, but we happened to end up at the Roadhouse. And somebody told me nothing happens good after midnight, so I left. I went home. And after I left, sorry. My girlfriend was attacked. And I'm asking for more safety in our town. I will not be going to these places anymore because of this. But to watch my best friend go through this is disheartening. I didn't move into a place that feels like downtown Phoenix. Else I would have bought a house in downtown Phoenix. But as I have been told all week, I, I own Vitality Health and Fitness Gym. My members have told me over and over again, this continuously happens because there's not enough security in our town. So I would like to bring this to our attention and I hope as a business owner and a resident, a long-term resident, that we bring safety. If we're going to invite these individuals up to our town, we make sure that we have enough safety for the locals in our town. She is a longtime local also and she's not going out. She's not eating. She's not even going to the gym anymore because of this. Somebody from Peoria came up here and hurt her and she's scared now. So I'm asking, please look at our security in this process, please.
Thank you.
Scott Waller.
Hey, that's a little tough to follow. Um, my name's Scott Weller. I own a parcel behind, uh, the tractor supply over there, area eighteen. And I just wanted to introduce myself and try to get something moving in a positive direction. I read the September eighteenth notes regarding ten and eighteen and Dusty and Ernie and, uh, Tom. All had different, everybody here has all kinds of different opinions. Everything seems to be leading in just more dissension. Um, I had a meeting, um, Luke called me back in July and in August, I had a two-hour meeting with him. Uh, he laid out a map. We looked at all the possibilities there. And I think you're underestimating the potential for the property that you have for development. Instead of focusing on all the things that can go wrong and all the neighbors and all the complaints, that's why nothing's been done over there. I think Ernie made a comment that you've been here since it was originally done and so have I. Um, but the reason it's not developed is because the town set it aside. The reason it's not developed is because the town is dysfunctional. And I think we all need to get on the same page. Create a terrific development over there. You wanted it to be commercial. Luke is really smart. He's got a lot of good ideas. It could become even bigger, but I can't bring buyers into a town where there's people protesting and there's all this dissension and you're meeting, you know, I met with him in August and now I read in September, you're telling him to meet with this, uh, group of neighbors over there. And I have to come here to protect any diminution of value of my property? This is an idiocracy. So I'm just asking you to take the time to get to know me, get to know the project, get to know the possibilities. Instead of just kicking it out and getting in bed with whoever comes in the door here to talk about, they want to protect the neighborhood. What do you think? Everybody wants to make a great thing. You've already got a hospital there. There's so much potential. But we can't get, we can't get two feet, we can't get past anything. I have, I have people calling me every week, want my property. Yeah, I got a text and a call yesterday on Sunday. So it's very difficult to work with any of the buyers. They don't want to come in here. You guys got to take a look at yourself and not everything else that's going on. So I'm just asking you to let Luke do his thing. Quit directing him in different directions. Let us look at the possibilities and stop teaming up with people. Appreciate it. You guys have a great evening.
Thank you.
Janice Weinman-Dennis.
Hi, I'm resident of, of Cave Creek about seven years. Fortunately, uh, up this way in the town of Cave Creek for the last six. Um, clearly moved here from New York and just have always loved it. Um, just in that time, I mean, I did come here through hearing people talking about the incident. And I know her as well, um, and was horrified by the pictures in the video. But even before I was told about it, this whole thing, I had my stepdaughter who lives just south of the one-on-one. Active, young, single woman. I said something about up there, what happened? She says, oh, the east side. No one goes to the east side. And that's when she just said, oh, the east side. So clearly something is going on. We, we spontaneously went up to the bull riding recently. It, first of all, we don't go out much, so it was like, oh, you know, like so much was going on. It did have that feel of chaos. It feels like it's just a shift away from going wrong. And I, I support everything everybody said. I think it needs to be looked at because it's, it feels like it's ready to explode at any given time. And I just hope to continue to, you know, nurture this beautiful town. It's just amazing and I'm happy to live here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional speakers.
Okay, with that, we'll move to the town manager report.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Today is a, a good day, uh, for Cave Creek. We have the short-term rental ordinance is in effect. So we've done something really good for this town that, um, our toll-free complaint hotline, uh, phone number is listed on the town's website. So anyone who has, uh, troubles with short-term rental properties being, um, abused by party houses, et cetera, um, can call in immediate complaints. We also put up a, um, online form, if it's something not, uh, super urgent, you want to fill out a, a form to file the complaint, that's available as well. Um, so just for the record, the complaint hotline is one eight hundred eight three zero one six, uh, one six one zero, eight hundred eight three zero one six one zero. And the application is out and the registrations for short-term rentals, um, are coming in. We've got about sixty-eight currently, um, active. I was going to mention that, uh, tomorrow night is a fundraiser for Cave Creek Museum, the spaghetti dinner. Fundraiser, um, Evelyn, um, is very thrilled to announce that it is sold out. So that's good news for the, uh, Cave Creek Museum. And the town, town marshal, you want to make an introduction?
Mayor and council, it's a great pleasure. Introduce the new commander of the Cave Creek MCS, Maricopa County Sheriff's Office District Four, uh, Captain David Laterno. Captain Laterno was with us many, many years ago when I first started my career here in Cave Creek, uh, owner under there, I believe Captain Stoner, correct? Which were some of the best years Cave Creek has had with the sheriff's office. So I'm very excited and very happy that David is back and that we're going to see a a positive upswing in, uh, our relations with the county sheriff's office. Dave, do you want to say hi, please? Captain David Laterno.
Hello, everybody. Uh, like Adam said, I was here as a lieutenant many years ago. I've got thirty-two years on with the sheriff's office. Fifteen as a captain. I've been district captains in Fountain Hills and our district one, which is out in East Mesa. Um, and I'm happy to be here. Let me say that first off. Um, it's not, I don't want to, the town is safe. The town is safe. You do have nightlife here. With nightlife brings on, not to minimize it, brings on incidents like that. It does. Um, that's not to say that, uh, it won't happen again. And even if you enhance the safety, I'll give an example. I worked many, many years down in Old Town providing security in Old Town at the bar district. These type of events do happen, even if you add extra security. It does. Alcohol. But as far as the town, uh, the town is safe. When you talk all different types of crime and the things that can happen in towns, burglaries and along this, the criminal activity, it's safe here. Um, I'll have a talk with this family before they leave. Go over a few things. I'm not going to bring up in here that has to do with the report. Nine one one was called that night. My guys did take a report. I spent two hours today watching body, body camera video and looking at the report. So I'll answer some questions for them. I don't know that this is the place to do that, but, uh, I'm very happy to be here. Um, nothing's going to change up here with me coming here. Uh, if anything, think changes will be positive. We'll do, we'll, we'll handle traffic enforcement and everything else that's been going on here and, and enhance it even greater. I've been talking to Marshall Stein about it. I've been up here about a month and a half, but unfortunately I, I had to take several weeks off. I had a death in the family, but I'm here full-time. Uh, my staff and myself are readily available to answer questions and deal with anything from the council and the citizens of Cave Creek. Including Carefree. I have to mention that because we covered Carefree also. With that, I'm very happy to be up here and I look forward to working with everybody.
Well, Captain, I'd like to welcome you to Cave Creek. I look forward to years of, uh, of cooperative for the safety of the town.
Me too. And we'll meet head to head. I know this was short notice here, but you and I will.
Okay, thank you.
In a good way.
Okay.
Yeah, Bob, I have a question.
For the captain?
No, I have a question for the town manager.
Um, if depends on what it is, you may not be able to say it with under open meeting laws, depending on what it is.
Okay.
Your options are to, to direct something on a future agenda item to respond to criticism or ask staff to do something.
Okay, and uh, this is just on a future item.
Okay.
So, um, and I'm sorry for the pause here. Um, I know that we have discussed as a, as a council ordinance review and I'm just kind of wondering where that process is. Um, is there a date scheduled to begin that process or are we waiting for, I don't know what?
Uh, Mayor, uh, council member, which, what ordinance are you referring to?
We have, we've talked since last January about a complete review of our ordinance suite. And I'm sort of wondering if that's going to happen or where we are with that. So these are ordinances that are, um, that don't exactly align with each other, ordinances that cause, uh, questions. I'm just wondering where that review is.
Uh, well, well, why don't we talk? Because a lot of that came up during the joint meeting between the town council. That was on the list with the town council and the planning commission, I believe. And, and I think the council set the priorities at that time. So let me go back and review that.
Okay, then I have one other, uh, one other question, and that is we, we made a decision as a council to shift, uh, the management of local landmarks from the town, um, from the town system to the museum. And I'm wondering, um, about the formalities of that. Is there a contract? Are there expectations that will be defined? Just kind of, what's the status of that?
Okay. We can't have a discussion.
I'll put a report together for the council.
Perfect. As long as we, as long as it's up here. Thank you.
I, I have a question also. Would it be possible, uh, to have the town manager and the town manager's report, uh, identify, uh, criminal activity in the town of any type? Just kind of a summary? In the future, not, not right now, but in the future. So when we have an incident, we get, we get told?
Sure.
Okay, we're on the consent agenda, uh, looking for motion then to, uh, approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero. First of the general agenda items, uh, is, uh, the presentation on the state historical preservation office by Eric Bondi and Councilmember Elkum has asked to make a introduction.
Uh, and I'll make it brief, but Eric, um, if you'll take the podium, please. Um, Eric is an official of the state historic preservation office. This is, um, an office and a system that is authorized by ARS forty-one eight sixty-one. Uh, and the purpose is historical and cultural foundations of this state should be preserved as a living part of the community life and development. And Eric was really great to help us understand local landmarks and how we could use it. And you have, uh, a staff member with you and will you introduce her, please?
Yes, this is Ariana Urban, uh, who's a planner with our office. She has several other things, but we can get to that in a little bit. Great. Uh, and first of all, uh, Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for inviting us. A little bit about what we do. We're an office of twelve, soon to be thirteen people, about half of which are archaeologists engaged in compliance either for the National Historic Preservation Act or the State Historic Preservation Act, which essentially means if you're going, if you're using public funds on a property that's uh, I can move it closer if that helps. Put it down here. There, um, if you're using public funds, then and you're affecting an historic property with that, you have to go through a process. So about half our office deals with that. Five of our staff are archaeologists dealing with archaeological compliance. And then there's the equivalent of one full-time uh, employee that works on built environment cases like that. Uh, we also have other programs. We run the national register program in Arizona. The certified local government program, which is a program where cities can have historic preservation ordinances and commissions. And a local register of historic places that certify through the National Park Service. We have, um, a grant program. We have the Arizona Heritage Fund currently, though that's being authorized year to year, and we're not sure that's going to get reauthorized next year with the expected state budget shortfall. And, uh, am I missing anything? I think I've hit all of them. So and we put on a conference which occupied, which happened two weeks ago and occupied way too much time planning for that. But, uh, yeah, so we have, uh, first of all, I want to make this open because we're here to help you. So if you have questions, please interrupt us and ask them and we'll, we will respond. So we've taken a look at what you guys have done so far and frankly, it's pretty impressive. We're very thrilled to hear about the short-term rental. Uh, one, for example, that, that's a problem in a lot of communities and I'm glad you're addressing it because too much of the time, like town of Sedona has lost a lot of its residences because they've all been taken over by short-term rentals. Jerome as well is facing that and Prescott. Um, we also have seen that you're in the middle of your general plan, which is a great time to talk about these particular issues. So we know about the local landmarks program, obviously, and that's a great start to things and might be it's whatever, everything that you guys are doing is working because historic preservation is about not freezing anything in time, but managing change over time. So essentially keeping Cave Creek's essential cave creekiness, which will be different for every person because, you know, most people have chosen to move here. They don't end up here because a job shows up. They come here because they like it and they've, they've, uh, chosen to move here and live here. And over time that can go away. Usually when we're called in to talk to communities like this, it's because something bad has happened or about to happen. Um, Bisbee, the, there was a, the first big McMansion was planned to go up and the town panicked because they didn't want that sort of development in their town. More recently in Prescott, there was a case that went before, uh, went before their historic preservation commission where, and well, they would view him as an out-of-town developer. He was from Prescott Valley. Wanted to put in a six-story hotel in the center of Whiskey Row across from the courthouse. Um, there was no market study. They indicated Prescott needed one of these. Uh, in fact, they had just built a new hotel a couple of blocks off Whiskey Row. But this would have become the tallest structure in Courthouse Square there and exceeded every existing ordinance in that. But he wanted to press forward with it. And it was going to be also curiously modular construction. So essentially, um, exaggerated or fancier storage containers that would have a fake veneer on it was designed by a Disney Imagineer of all things. And thankfully they had the rules in place and a massive public outcry to stop that. There hadn't even been a lot of consideration to how the construction of this would affect the neighboring buildings, which were hundred-year-old buildings since it was right there on Whiskey Row. And there, the neighbors were rightfully concerned that the construction of such a thing could cause their walls or entire buildings to collapse. But thankfully, as I said, they were able to stop this. He came back, uh, earlier this year with a revised plan that was smaller, but still uh, something that the town objected to and did not want to go forward with. In looking at some of what we've saw online at least about, uh, yeah, from the town core plan and the design guidelines and that. If this was to happen here, well, first of all, you don't have a lot of buildings right next to each other, but if this were to happen here, there's a lot of maze as opposed to shells in here, which may not be able to stop that should the town not want it. If the town wants it, that's no problem. But it's if you don't want it and you'd want to have some sort of more ability to manage the change that comes here, then we would recommend doing a few things or give you a few ideas of what you could do to try to manage that some. One of which would be doing, uh, taking your landmark program and actually adding a zoning component to it where owners would voluntarily allow the city to put a zoning overlay over the footprint of that building or over the parcel, which will then give the city some sort of design review over what goes on there. In fact, I see in here that there's site plan review, but not design review, which is another step. You, you already require a site plan review for any building that comes in. But you could also do, uh, do design review on it as well. You got anything?
Thank you. Um, Mayor Morris, Vice Mayor Royer, and members of the council. Uh, as Eric said, my name's Ariana Urban. Uh, I am a historic preservationist and a planner, um, with the state historic preservation office and I have the pleasure to work as the local government coordinator for the state historic preservation office. So it is, I am the lucky person that gets to drive all around the state of Arizona and help all kinds of municipalities, um, do historic preservation and, and figure out kind of what the history, help figure out what the history of, of their towns really means to them. So, um, first of all, I just want to say thank you. I mean, we walked into the council chambers and immediately were greeted by two wonderful members of the community. So the hospitality we have already received here is fantastic. Um, thank you guys so much for, for, uh, making us feel so welcome already. Um, um, You know, like Eric said, when, when we get called to a city, especially to speak before a council, it's, it's usually a dire situation. But, but in this case, it, it doesn't seem to be. Um, it really seems as though the people of Cave Creek and, and the city elected officials and administrators are interested in historic preservation and heritage conservation and cultural resources and, and, uh, preserving, like Eric said, the, the real essence of, of what Cave Creek is. So already you guys are leaps and bounds ahead of some other, of some other cities that we come to. And whatever it is, uh, you're doing, it's, it is working already. You know, we don't, we did not drive all the way up and down Cave Creek Road and go, ugh, ugh, what is that? It, it was of, your streetscape has been very nicely managed and the, the influx of the old and the new really does work well together. And there is no sore thumbs or something that really, um, looks out of place. So, so these design guidelines, um, I actually kind of wanted to ask a question. Is that, can I ask a question of the council? Okay, I don't, I was the historic preservation officer for the city of Mesa. So it's been my Robert's rules of orders are a little bit, uh, rusty. But we did take a look at these design guidelines and my question is, are these design guidelines utilized a lot? Um, I don't know if maybe there's something from some planning here, but are these design guidelines really referenced and utilized a lot? Or when someone comes to building Cave Creek, do they just kind of know what to do?
We have no design guidelines.
Okay.
We have, we, we have no design review, I should say.
Okay.
We, we, we had make suggestions. Uh, does somebody else want to chime in on that?
Yeah, the, the, um, our planning department is, is sensitive to the history that we
Yeah.
Uh, here in town, um, the director of development is a young man that grew up in this town.
That's wonderful.
A sense of history along with him. Um, but, but the, the issue of saying you can't paint it that color or make it that shape doesn't really fit in, in Cave Creek and we recognize that.
As do we. Yes, we certainly understand that. Um, we never, we never want to be a stick. We always want to be a carrot in historic preservation. So, um, yeah, and that, that really is the case all over the state. Um, I wanted to just reference, uh, the historic preservation element in your, in your town core plan, which we were just reading as we were having a snack earlier and thought was frankly, like really, really, really well-written and really well-researched. Um, we were thrilled to see that, uh, there's mentions of preserving facades and kind of the, the relationships of the buildings to each other. And then, um, of course, you know, recognizing and respecting the core's historic character. So, um, before I finish, I think I just want to ask one more question. In terms of conservation and, and preserving the town's cultural resources, what would you all like to see? Um, what kinds of things would you like to see happen in terms of, of preservation in the cave creek?
I mean, we've talked about the possibility of identifying various neighborhoods.
Yes.
And I think that's a good place to start.
Yeah. Okay.
So just to point this out, what's historic now is basically up to nineteen seventy-three, which sounds I understand. It, it, it's hard to imagine that, but yeah, stuff in the seventies is now what, what there is that could be considered historic is now we're at that stage. The rule has always been fifty years that's set by the, the, by the National Park Service. And it's kind of universal in different countries as well. But yeah, so seventy-three, and I think there was a fair amount of development going on up here. So there might be neighborhoods that could be eligible for the national register. Uh, a little bit about national register listing, it doesn't really, at the state and federal level, doesn't really stop anything from happening. You can list it one day and tear it down the next day if you're using your own private funds to do so. One place where it does come into play is when, like I mentioned, with public funds, either state or federal, there would be a process to go through to do that. Most of the restrictions that you may have heard about from historic preservation comes at the local level. So that would be up to you all to implement, should you want to do that. City of Tucson does not really do that. They have about twenty-five historic districts and only five of them are under a historic zoning overlay. The city of Phoenix, they're all under historic zoning overlays. Um, and there are tax benefits to doing this. She runs a tax program that reduces property taxes for uh, non-income producing, meaning it would exclude rentals and short-term rentals. But she runs a tax program that would reduce, uh, property taxes by around fifty percent in return for agreeing to maintain the historic character of the exterior of their buildings from what's visible from the public right away. So it wouldn't affect mostly things that happen in the backyard or inside.
Yeah, the, the national register is a great program, um, and something to certainly worth considering. Uh, we can help do that research about which neighborhoods might be fifty years of age or older and, and what kind of character they might have.
Good.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions to ask. The, uh, do you have model criteria? Like everything is fifty years old. I, I can, I grew up in a house that meets that. Uh, I wouldn't think it would be historical preservable at this point, but, uh, do you, do you have a model criteria for what other characteristics something has to have before it meets the historical criteria?
Mayor Morris, uh, and members of the council, yes, very much. Um, we generally work off of the federally recognized criteria for, for eligibility for, uh, a good historic preservation candidate. Um, at the same time, we often work with municipalities that have a lot of really special character like this one to determine maybe some, some specialized or local, locally important criteria um, might be appropriate to, to add into the, the, the federal criteria as well. We also look at, um, what we call character-defining features. So the real the real elements of a historic building that, that give it its historic character, whether it's the roofline or the stone chimney or, um, you know, the, the adobe, the building material, there's all of these original historic elements. So we, we also look at uh, and really study what those character-defining features are, either for a neighborhood or for a certain building and measure the rest of the buildings kind of in that way as well.
Since we do this through the museum and through the planning commission, the planning and zoning, that's seems to be what we do. Would it be possible for the finding zoning, uh, in museum to work with the historical preservation folks? If maybe you figured out some guidelines for the town?
Certainly.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, especially our, I guess our planning department would be the, uh, the, uh, place to start to, uh, and then at, at some point it had to come to council to give direction as whether we wanted to do that. So they'd be have some kind of scope to the, uh, to what, what it would entail and then get, uh, get direction for the town.
Yeah, uh, Mayor Morris, members of the council, we, we work with planning departments all the time. I'm, I apologize. Um, please go ahead.
I'm aware of projects that have come into town and come to our, uh, economic development person who is local.
Great.
And those, uh, those buildings, those designs have changed because the builders who come into Cave Creek recognize the, uh, the, the concern of Cave Creek particularly about our great history. So we, we actively work with developers. We don't necessarily, uh, require them to make changes.
Right.
But a lot of those changes occur as a result of working with staff.
Yeah, Mayor Morris, Councilman Require, um, that is, that is great. That it, that means that Cave Creek has such a strong character that these, um, developers aren't compelled. They're not required to, to make these changes, but they want to do so to really, to really fit in with, with the rest of the landscape in Cave Creek. That is great news.
Is, is there a town in Arizona that, that has done this right? Who would that be?
Hmm, Mayor Morris, members of the council, yes. Uh, there are a few. Um, Prescott is doing a really good job right now, as we mentioned. Um, they take turns. Uh, there's, there are life cycles to, to historic preservation in each town. It depends on the staff people and and who the active community members are. Um, can you think of a great example of a, maybe a comparable size or city character?
Prescott's probably the best one to do right now. They have the, uh, most consistent. When towns like Oro Valley are also doing it, but they have a very limited number. I mean, they were incorporated in nineteen seventy-five. So they have a, uh, two historic properties on there, an old ranch that used to be the Stagecoach Station and an archaeological site. But they are planning for, uh, the, their first neighborhoods as well. So they're surveying those or planning to survey those to, uh, start going through the process for a couple of their subdivisions and condo complexes as well. So that's an interesting one because they've been a certified local government for about, oh, twelve to fifteen years now. And when they first signed on, we were like, yeah, are you sure you want to do this? There's not really anything here. And their response was, but there will be, and they were right. So, yeah, um, Sedona is actually doing a fairly decent job as well. Um, actually, they're not doing anything wrong, I should say. They're doing a fine job. Um, Jerome is a little bit too restrictive on things there that, this is being recorded, but, um, there, there has been a mentality in the past that if a rock fell in the middle of the street, they wouldn't want to move the rock because that's part of their history, which is way too restrictive for, for what they should be doing. They should be managing change better and they are actually doing a good, a better job lately as well. But that's it. It's really, like I said, managing change and, and having a bit of guidance on where, what direction things go in, which as we've said, you already are doing a great job at, so.
I would, I, Mayor Morris and members of the council, I would always, I would also add Scottsdale. Um, they're, they're a city that doesn't have a lot of zoning overlays and, and imposed zoning regulations, but you know, they've got their, their old town, their downtown. They have, um, design guidelines for more neighborhoods and just individual properties than you can even imagine. Um, they have a lot of nice how-to guides for their, for their public, for their property owners. They also have a great, um, archaeology program as well, which is important no matter where we are in the entire state of Arizona. So, yeah, we can, um, we can set you up with some, some examples as well.
I just want to plug Tucson.
Oh, of course. Yes. Yes, we, we are, we work very closely with the city of Tucson and they, they, they do it at another level, for sure.
Mayor. Since y'all are historical preservation, I got two words for you that, uh, closely associated with Cave Creek. And those two words are dome house.
Mayor Morris.
That they sent me whenever it made the his national historical, yeah.
It was, um, I have a personal connection to the dome house. My parents met at Arcasanti in nineteen seventy-nine, so.
You're a hippie chick.
I am, um, and I am, I'm happy to be, um, but also, you know, a native Arizonan and very connected to, to Arizona. So, um, yeah, the, the dome house is an incredible example of, you know, sympathetic architecture, organic architecture, um, something that helps to characterize this area so well and, and is a national, nationally listed landmark. Yeah.
Do y'all know what it is?
It's visible from the, uh, Irish pub.
Oh, is it? Go check that out. I didn't know. Um, the dome house is, was the first, um, executed architectural design and construction of Paolo Saleri, who was a Italian architect that came to study under Frank Lloyd Wright uh, in the nineteen forties and it didn't work out. Um, so he went out on his own and his very first commission was, was this dome house, which is carved into the side, um, of the rock and actually has or had, uh, a, a glass dome as its roof that revolved, um, and could be opened to, to stargaze at night. And the, the opening part is right underneath the, the bed, up on the bed platform. So, um, yes, it's a remarkable property. And, uh, it should all be, it should, it should be experienced by all of you. It's, um, it's really special.
Well, we thank you very much. Very interesting presentation.
Sure, thank you. Um, in closing, I, uh, would just like to, at the encouragement of, um, of Miss Anna Marzolo, I would like to read into the record, um, something really special, um, that really characterizes historic preservation. And, and there's all different types of people in Cave Creek. There's artists, there's, um, you know, retirees. There's old timers, there's newcomers, um, natural resource enthusiasts and, and really they all have a common goal. They might seem different, but they have a common goal and that is caves creek culture and its heritage. So, um, really meaning, really understanding the connection of, of a place to the people that live there is so important. So, uh, Ms. Marzolo, uh, who spearheaded the work to nominate the Del Norte Place Historic District down in Phoenix, um, was fortunate to have, uh, Phoenix mayor at the time, Paul Johnson, write the foreword to this document. And so I would like to read it if I'm as mayor, I am proud to add my support and endorsement for your designation as a historic district. Cities are so much more than asphalt and concrete. They are vibrant places with not only a present and a future, but a past. And a city that ignores its past will not have much of a future. Phoenix is a relatively young city. We don't have a two-hundred-year-old capital or an inn where George Washington slept. But that is all the reason more to respect and preserve what we do have. And what we do have is an unlimited amount of pride in our past. I am especially proud of our historic districts. I have always maintained that if people are the heart of a city, neighborhoods are the soul. With historic zoning and historic preservation, the very best part of Arizona's history will be preserved for future generations. And that is good for the heart and soul. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Anna. Okay, the next agenda item is a presentation of Cave Creek Unified School District Goals by interim superintendent Bill Dolisow.
Good evening, Mayor Morris, Vice Mayor Royer, members of the council. Um, other than just realizing I'm now a historic item. I feel good about that. Um, but again, just thank you for letting me be here. I really just wanted to introduce myself, um, as the interim superintendent of the Cave Creek Unified School District, let you know who is uh, helping to lead our young people. Um, so give you a little bit about me and then what we're doing this year. So our theme is together. Uh, that more, I think today more than ever, um, is vital. And it's the only way that will get, um, our kids, our staff, our community moving forward. So uh, the town of Cave Creek is certainly a large portion of that group, um, that I need together. All right, it is working. I wanted to introduce you to my five incredible bosses. Um, these five are the governing board, um, who are elected officials, uh, helping to run the district. Could not do this without them. Uh, they themselves have done some tremendous work already, since I've come on board, really setting norms and commitments to each other uh, and our community about serving as governing board members. Little bit about me, I relocated here in nineteen ninety-nine. My wife and I, uh, were in Connecticut and our parents left there and mine moved to St. Louis, hers moved here. Came out here on a spring break, uh, from teaching and we decided to buy a house and move twenty-five years ago with no jobs, no nothing. Uh, it worked out really well. Uh, went to the University of California Irvine. Yes, anteaters are ferocious when cornered. Those of you who know anteaters appreciate that. Thank you. Um, and again, twenty-five years I've lived out here. Uh, twenty-three of them have been in the Cave Creek Unified School District. So this really is my home. Um, I've been a teacher, a coach, different administrative positions along my journey. Was just appointed to be the interim superintendent since July one, so I am still drinking through the fire hose, so to speak. Uh, but it's been an incredible ride and that ride has been made possible by the tremendous families and staff that I get to work with every day. I like sports, outdoors, gaming, the greatest gift that I've gotten and, uh, the best, not raised, but best new job that's happened is, uh, my oldest daughter Sierra made me a grandpa eight months ago. So that's been awesome. And then a fun fact about me, I backpacked and hitchhiked through Africa for six months. Uh, because I didn't know what I wanted to do when I grew up and that seemed like a good idea for six months. Um, I again, our theme is together this year. This is one of my favorite phrases for the raindrop. Joy is entering the river. If you think about it, all rain can do is wet a rock. Raindrops joining a river, working together can carve a Grand Canyon. Take you on a little African tale. These are actually all pictures I took. But one of the most ferocious, uh, warrior groups in all of Africa is the Maasai warriors. And what's interesting is that most people don't understand when a Maasai warrior goes out and returns back to the village, the first question or first phrase that one warrior asks another is kasariya ingera. Um, and so we start all of our meetings with that because the meaning of that is and how are the children? So this person who's been out protecting from lion, protecting in the savanna, the first question one warrior asks another is, and how are the children? They are hoping for the reply sapati ingera, which means all the children are well. So again, the Maasai and what we've taken on this year is really a focus on if we know our children are well, we know our village, we know our community as well. Goals for this year for me hinge around three key factors, communication, safety, achievement. What I realize in communication is that our population really wants authentic communication. So it's not just about showing up, making an appearance, and believing it's really being invested. I think that's one of the reasons I was chosen, is I have invested twenty-three of the twenty-five years here in our community. Um, safety, you don't have a day that goes by when I am not happy that all my kids make it to school and make it home to, from school every single day. You know, I was once told, uh, show me where you spend your time and your money, and I'll tell you what your priorities are. So one of the things we're doing with safety is this year is we have taken on a very aggressive stance with training all of our staff in common safety protocols. That way, if our students feel safe coming to work, our, our teachers feel safe coming to work, achievement's going to take care of ourself. And, and I would be remiss if achievement didn't have something to do with what we do in education. But that goes way beyond test scores. Like, achievement is often measured. We just got raided, our, you know, we're in A district again. You know, I applaud that, I appreciate that, I celebrate that. Um, but the achievement goes on beyond just test scores. If all of our people from our, from our janitors, through our superintendent, if all of us raise our level of achievement, the kid's achievement is going to raise as well. Um, so that's what we're talking about with achievement. And this I'm really proud of for a long time, Cactus Shadows, I think, and our community has really been focused on college, college, college. Well, that is great, and that is absolutely still a focus. Um, but I want our graduates at the end of twelfth grade prepared for whatever E they choose. And those three Es, because I think they're easier to remember, making them all Es. If they're ready to go to work when they're eighteen and they graduated college, then they need to be ready to go to work. They, they should be ready to be employed if that's what they choose. They should be ready to enlist. If that's what they want to choose and go serve our country, or they should be ready to enroll if they want to continue their education right then. If we can help get them ready for whichever E makes the most sense for them, then we're doing a good job. Um, some quick facts, we're about forty-four hundred students. I won't read through what our boundaries, all of that stuff. I am very proud of um, our over ninety-six percent graduation rates, our elementary class sizes are sitting around twenty-four right now, so I think a great size. We are big. Most people think of the Cave Creek District and they think of Cave Creek as the small, uh, one of the bigger land area districts, a hundred and seventy-five square miles, um, is quite large. Eight schools, one online school, five elementaries, one middle, one high. I'm just wanted to quickly introduce those to you if you're not familiar with them, but our Academy of Excellence is our online, serves grades, students six through twelve, for those that feel like that is the best option for them. Ultimately, we've got Black Mountain. Black Mountain is our artistic school. It's got our artistic slants. Um, they believe in teaching character things through their different arts programs, so that's their focus. Uh, Desert Sun is our uniform school, so a little bit more traditional, also project-based. Uh, Desert Willow was the first, um, Spanish immersion school in Arizona and is still a model for immersion programs and dual language programs throughout not only the state, but even the country we still get visitors from. Uh, we'll be, we'll be honored by the Spanish ambassador is actually coming to Desert Willow this week to do a, a site visit for us. Horseshoe Trails is our horsemanship school. It's also been a nationally recognized blue ribbon school. Lone Mountain is our STEM school or STEAM school, so they're really, uh, mathematics and science-focused and engineering. Then you have those five schools, which all come into Sonoran Trails, and that is the greats, uh, Jill Serino there is the new principal. Um, does a great job combining those five different schools and uniting them into one school, which then feeds up to the cherry on top of our cake. Our flagship school is our high school, Cactus Shadows, one of the, um, best-rated high schools both in the States and even wins national recognition as well. Why I'm here again, just, I would love for you, when you talk to people, let them know that you know the quality of high, uh, high quality of CCUSD and that we can find a place for their kid. We have five different elementary schools with different programs, those go into the middle school. Um, I truly believe we provide a world-class education in a small-town feel. Um, and I would love, and I cordially invite any and all of you, including the community, um, for any events that we're having, they are always open and you are always welcome. Uh, one of, one of my asks would be something that's not been done in Cave Creek, is this creating a profile of a graduate? So I've told you, I want, what I want them ready for, those three Es when they graduate. But what do we want our twelfth graders leaving our school system? With what? With what skills? With what abilities? With what traits? Um, and this is a we, this is not Bill Dolisaw, this is not my cabinet, just teachers. Uh, I'm meeting with kid groups to talk to them about what they need, parent groups, community groups, business groups. I would love input from anybody who's seeing this, uh, who's sitting in this meeting as well. Um, to give their input in terms of what do we want to send our twelfth graders off into the world prepared to do regardless of what E they're choosing. Because any of those Es can lead to success. Um, my email address is up there. I've given my business cards, uh, hopefully be disseminated to all of you. Um, I would love your input on, you know, those traits that you would like to see our kids graduate with and, and what that profile of a learner looks like. Mayor Morris, Vice Mayor Royer and council members, if there's anything you would ever like from us to provide to come in, I'm happy to come back. I'm more happy to bring kids because they're the ones that this is all about and, and show you what an amazing group of young people we have in Cave Creek and that, that help raise into those to participate in our community. So, if there's any questions, I'm, I'm happy to entertain those. But again, ultimately, this was me really just trying to get to introduce myself to you guys, let you know who I am, what I'm about. Um, and that we are doing great things in Cave Creek, and we would love your feedback on the profile of a graduate.
Questions from council?
Yeah, do you guys, uh, do you guys have a, uh, program where, uh, they have to do a certain amount of hours of community service?
Uh, so we don't have anything that is absolutely mandate community service. We do have the superintendent's award. Students can actually earn a varsity letter based on how many hours of community service they do, if they do. Um, and then every year, well, this will be my first, but we've given, uh, the superintendent's community service award. There's fifty hours for the year is an elementary, goes upwards of a hundred into the middle school, and then it's over two hundred. Um, typically, by the time they graduate, I've had some students, uh, being at those graduations and that, that have had thousands of hours of community service, and that is recognized through that superintendent's award. And then, like I said, even the AIA recognizes as a varsity letter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You have a question. Have you ever considered a mentoring program, having previous, um, Cactus Shadows high school students come to the school and have one-on-ones with students on what kind of careers they now hold and what they accomplished by going to high school and college and/or trade school?
Vice Mayor, sorry, Vice Mayor Royer, great question, and the answer is yes. We oftentimes just struggle in terms of finding those people, um, that are willing to do that. Um, we now have a person, Erin Share is over our college and career readiness. She works with the councils at the high school, especially, but the whole team. Um, so yes, a, any and all internships, we are definitely looking to improve. I think that's an area of growth for us is that CTE and that internship or mentorship program, particularly for students who may not feel like they're going to college right now. Um, but they may want to go out, get those internships, and then who knows where they'll go from there. But, um, yes, we are always looking for, and if you have any contacts of people who are interested.
I have two children who both graduated from the Cactus Shadows.
And I didn't want to say this, but I have a feeling I know.
I think I'll try to recruit them because they're both doing well, and I think that they would be good role models for students right now in school.
The, uh, well, they were excellent.
Saying I could guarantee it.
They were excellent when I had them in middle school, so I don't doubt that they're, they're awesome now.
Mayor. Yeah, since, since, uh, having just discovered tonight that my high school diploma is eligible for historic preservation, I would like to, uh, uh, get one of your business cards and have an offline conversation. We've had a pretty ag- aggressive agenda tonight, so I don't want to take up a bunch of time.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. Yeah, Councilmember Bunch, I look forward to it.
And I, and I just want to wave a flag for career tech education. Get those kids ready.
And teaching. Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
Well, I'm, I'm sort of proud of our school district, and I wish you all the best. I think, uh, we've got a wonderful school district, and it deserves the support of the community, and you certainly have mine.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, if there's no objection, I'd like to take, uh, item seven, which is the council discussion direction to staff regarding design authorization for the three-speed tables and rectangular rapid flashing beacons out of order. We have a lot of people here tonight, uh, to see that. So if, is there any objection to that?
No.
So with that, we will move to, uh, agenda item seven.
All right. Brian, you have the PowerPoint ready to go?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight, we would like to get direction from the council on how we wish to proceed. Um, as we've gone through this in the past, we want to take a look at the, um, what we have.
The issue here is the town has been monitoring, uh, the speed of traffic along Cave Creek Road for many years through the use of fifty feet recording signs and deployment of speed trailers.
Sorry, I'm pushing the button, sorry. Uh, there has been a measured increase in the speed of ta- uh, traffic through the town in the last couple of years, especially in the westbound direction. The eighty-fifth percentile speeds recorded over thirty-nine miles per hour with peak speeds in excess of sixty miles an hour through our town core. Um, risk to pedestrian safety increases exponentially as the s- speed of traffic increases. So, we're trying to figure out, so we've had some, from the history, we've had several things that we've done. In twenty thirteen, we began full-time collection of digital speed and traffic data. Uh, in two thousand and fifteen, we had the bike lane project, which was constructed, and we had full traffic studies performed, crosswalks reestablished and painted. Uh, mid-seventeens pedestrian crossing at the Roadhouse and, and Herald's was installed. That's our only real flashing crossing that we have. In late twenty eighteen, we did a, uh, installation of a larger stop signs and, uh, red flashing beacons at the Cave Creek Road, and we also, um, ha- had for Schoolhouse Road the same. In late eighteen, we did the installation of two feedback signs at Vermish for the westbound and Spur Cross for the eastbound. So over the years, we have done numerous studies, looking at traffic, looking at speed, and looking at the amount of traffic that we have and what we can do. Uh, what we found is that the purpose of the discussion is that we've had two, uh, what's called local area safety studies performed by MAG. And they made recommendations within those studies. Uh, the initial local area study lifted traffic and accident data as well as project options to improve pedestrian safety. The phase-two study identified projects and ranked them in order. While presentations were made at the time of the local area safety studies by the consultants, a public discussion of the recommendation and potential alternatives is recommended prior to contracts being signed to design anything. Before we spend money, we want to know, is this what the council and the town really wants? So our initial, um, the initial study was done, uh, and performed long-term, uh, long-term goals. And the study was actually initiated in twenty nineteen. Um, we had a little thing called COVID that came through, so they couldn't measure the traffic and pedestrians because there weren't any. This town sort of became a ghost town. So we finished that study in April of twenty-one. And at that time, we went back to MAG uh, to, for another study, which identified, which was to take the projects that had been recommended within the initial study and develop them into, uh, costs and priorities as far as the studies. So, in the initial study, there was a long-term, uh, lane reduction of Cave Creek Road between Spur Cross Road and Schoolhouse Road, but that was not carried through to the phase-two study as a recommendation. Uh, the short term was the raised pedestrian crosswalks with rapid flashing rectangular beacons. Just to show you the initial long-term alternative, this was the, um, this was the one lane alternative that was presented. You're looking at, like I said, it was not, uh, carried through to the phase-two report, and the cost of implementation of this, uh, alternative would be upwards of a million dollars. The phase-two study had the following recommendations. The, um, r- rectangular rapid flashing beacons and speed table at the Roadhouse. One at Hilltop, which is Kiwanis and, um, and Dairy Queen area. And then one at Hidden Valley, which is on the, uh, west side of town. There were other priorities for medium priority that were identified. There was just an RFP at the American Legion where we have a crosswalk, and that was another high priority. Uh, but we're concentrating on trying to reduce the speed of traffic through the town. So, the local area safety study in the phase ranking, uh, they proceeded to, um, produce a cost-benefit ratio based on the, just, uh, based on traffic data that, um, and crashes. And so you'll see that the, uh, top three, the projects that we're going to talk to tonight are all, uh, high ranking. Uh, in order to get funding from MAG, you have to have a rating, a cost-benefit ratio of at least two. And so the three that we're talking about are six point two, four point seven, and two point seven for benefit-to-cost ratios. Uh, the benefit-to-cost ratios are, we're done using the Mericopa Association Government criteria that's based upon crash data, and we're per- performed, um, for each identified project. The three projects we wish to send to design have, uh, benefit ratios six point two, two point seven, and four point seven. And all three projects together, when you lump them together, have a cost-benefit ratio of over eight point five. Uh, so, eight, eight times money is pretty good money. Uh, the staff recommends proceeding with the design of the three raised pedestrian crosswalks and RFB design. The locations are the one at Hidden Valley, the one at Hilltop slash Kiwanis Marketplace and Dairy Queen, and the Roadhouse and Herald's. And these are depictions that were in the, uh, report and are in the published material that we had in the council packet. We decided also look at other studies that had been done on speed tables. And there had been one that was done, uh, recently, completed in, um, May of this year by the city of Cleveland. Now, they're a little bigger than we are. They have, uh, they had over nineteen thousand crashes and fatalities over the period of two thousand to sixteen, uh, twenty, tw- to twenty twenty. And half of them were being spe- half of the, uh, deaths and fatalities were speed-related. Uh, they installed speed tables at ten locations and measured speed and traffic both pre-installation and post-installation. The study that was completed in May and showed a decrease in the speed of traffic by seven point eight miles per hour, which is about what we are over on our eighty-fifth percentile speed. And as a result of the pilot program, Cleveland is looking to expand their speed table program. So what we're doing is not something that we're just pulling out of thin air. It's been experienced and, um, it's been studied by a much larger municipality. Uh, the relationship between speed and risk of fatal injury. Uh, these are studies from a two thousand and ten study that we pulled out. You'll notice that at thirty miles an hour, uh, there's about a ten percent, uh, chance of fatality. By the time you get up to forty percent, then you're up to about a seventy percent, and by the time you get, um, or forty miles an hour. Um, unfortunately, since I'm now a historic relic myself, uh, according to what's, uh, history, you'll notice that at sixty years of age, if you get hit by a car at thirty miles an hour, you're probably a twenty-five percent, um, chance of being killed. But by the time you're, by the time you get up to forty miles an hour, or basically what we're seeing is our eighty-fifth percentile speed through town, then ninety-five percent chance of fatality. So, speed is an important criterion, what we're looking at. And, um, so, we want to present the following options to council tonight. Uh, you can direct staff to enter in a contract for the three elevated, um, uh, pedestrian crosswalks and rectangular flashing beacons. Uh, you can direct staff to enter design contract for only the rectangular be- beacons, which are basically a push-button, but recognize that will have very little effect on the speed of traffic through town. It only affects when somebody's in a crosswalk. You can direct staff to enter into contract for only the elevated pedestrian crosswalks of three locations. That will slow traffic, but it won't necessarily highlight the fact when somebody's in a crosswalk. And you could, or you could maintain the current conditions. Traffic enforcement efforts, and Marshall Stein is here with me tonight to alone cannot be staffed economically over the length of the town core to either limit speeds or eliminate peak speeds through the town core. And Marshall Stein, do you want to say something about the efforts that you and the Sheriff's Department have been performing?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you know, traffic's been an issue. We've been dealing with quite some time. We have increased our traffic enforcement, and unfortunately, we are still seeing some.
Would you pull that microphone closer?
We've increased our traffic enforcement. We are still seeing high speeds, unfortunately. The, the truth of the matter is that the, the amount of speeds that we're seeing going through town or throughout the day, it's not just one concentrated period. We're not just seeing it from oh seven hundred to ten hundred, for example, throughout the day. And as unfortunately, the town engineer said, we've seen some pretty high speeds of sixty-plus miles per hour at certain points of our day.
At eleven o'clock in the afternoon, or eleven o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the afternoon. So those are timeframes that are being captured by our fixed assets, and those are concerning to me, that when we have speeds in excess of fifty-five miles an hour, twenty-five miles an hour, over the speed limit, where somebody's just cruising through, and if it were just in one location, that would be great. But what we're finding is that when we did the study for the traffic signal that the council asked us to look at, we set up a portable trailer at Good Shepherd of the Hills. And what we found is that there was no decrease in speed between Vermish and where we measured at Good Shepherd of the Hills Church, and as far as the eighty-fifth percentile speed, and we still had people doing fifty-five miles an hour through town during the daytime hours. Now, if we'd had the speed tables, they would have encountered two of them by the time they reached that location, and most likely would have slowed down.
Definitely would have slowed down. Wouldn't have really had much choice, that matter. The speed tables will be out twenty-four seven, obviously. So whereas if we deploy resources as far as law enforcement, we'll have one officer out there writing traffic citations, but if that officer happens to be on the west end of town, it's not going to prevent the knucklehead speeding from the east end of town. The traffic tables, twenty-four seven, they're out there. You have no choice. You have to deal with it. You're not going to deal with that at a high rate of speed and expect a positive outcome. Obviously, proper signage will be put out there. The raised pedestrian walkways will be to the speed tables. They will slow down our traffic in our town.
And they will be designed for the speed limit, so that you can take it at the speed limit with very little negative impact. And that's what the city of Cleveland found, that the speed tables, when designed properly, could be taken with very little negative impact to the flow of traffic through town or otherwise. Yes.
How many, how many people in Cleveland own horses? What percentage of the town?
You know, I haven't done that research, so I don't know. And I don't think in the neighborhoods, that, that was, that's a, that was one of the demographics that they had in the report.
Yeah, the little angel of cynicism sits on my shoulder, because I, I pull trailers for my horses, and going over a speed bump like I have to do in Kova Ranch Road, or going over a speed table is painful. It's much easier to stop and start a horse trailer than it is to have to go through that, that misery of having the speed tables. Have we, why didn't Maricopa Association of Governments in the second-phase study take a look at putting more stop signs in, and putting a stoplight at Spur, at Schoolhouse and Cave Creek Road? I mean, that seems to me, if you have two stop signs east of that and two stop signs west of that, probably slow down traffic.
I, I can't say why they didn't look at that, but at the same time, their, their issue is pedestrian safety and speed, and currently, to keep the level of service of a roadway up, you don't want a series of stop signs that are going to stop and slow traffic, I mean, that are going to curtail traffic entirely.
People come through Cave Creek to get out to Lake Bartlett and other places. Why not have them go the way they're supposed to, which is, you know, down Pima or one of the other, one of the other cross, you know, cutting across? It just seems to me that we're encouraging bad behavior by not putting those stop signs and those things that actually stop traffic now. Just a thought.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor. Members of council. Councilman Rhodes. I, I did have a question about the amount of boats we have that go through town, the amount of horse trails that go through town. And unfortunately, I even asked about the fire trucks, not that I really like firemen, but I figured I should ask, because Chief Board. And I, I've been assured, and we've actually spoke to some people that have gone through these speed tables with their horse trails, because that is obviously our number-one concern. And as long as that speed table is abided by, as, as long as you're hitting it at the speed that's recommended, the adverse effects to the horse are negligible. They're saying, if there's no, they're saying that as long as the people are following the speed limit, it's not going to jostle the boats, the horses, the trailers, and everything. Who did we speak to? We spoke to someone locally that had experience with them, with their horse trailer, and they had said that they had no negative effects going over with their horse trailer. I'm not an expert on horse trails, by the way.
Anecdote versus anecdote, I've dealt with them, and I, my horses get upset.
I'd like to note that Cave Creek Road is our major arterial through town. In the study that was done in Cleveland, were those roads major arterials in which they were having the speed bumps?
They weren't major arterials, but they were equivalent in traffic count to our, to Cave Creek Road. We have about thirteen thousand cars a day in a given direction along Cave Creek Road. And these study in Cleveland were actually done on thirty-five mile-an-hour roads, not thirty mile, not the thirty mile-an-hour road that we have set for Cave Creek. They were similar, they were similar in nature. I would say we, we still consider Cave Creek Road to be a minor arterial, and there were some on minor arterials in the Cleveland study.
The, the benefit and the benefit cost ratio. Thank you. The, the benefit and the benefit cost ratio, what, what is that benefit? That's injuries reduced, correct? I mean, severity, injuries, human suffering are all in that?
Yes.
Preventing those.
Preventing, preventing those and the cost, the cost, the associated costs of dealing with those injuries, both from the town standpoint and the personal standpoint. There's a whole description within the report that I could make available to council on how those are calculated, but I didn't want to go into the detail, but it is a standard practice that they do for every project that goes to MAG for funding, for RSP funding.
So there's, we're not, there's not much discussion about the amount of, of human beings that don't get killed or don't get run over by a car so far. I recall from the study that there was a forty-three percent improvement, if my memory is correct, by the combination of the flashing beacons and the speed tables.
Correct.
If we didn't do that and still wanted forty-three percent, I mean, this is hypothetical, because it wasn't a study of engineering. Are we prepared to live with the consequences, which are people getting run over and hurt?
That's my concern.
Yeah.
And my concern is not just about the, the raise of the eighty-fifth percentile speed, which is something that is normally looked at, but it's the two percent that are doing the crazy speeds through town. There was one report, and Adam and I looked at it, where the camera said somebody was doing ninety-eight miles an hour through town. You know, it was midnight. Maybe they had a late date at the bar or something, but they were doing ninety-eight miles an hour through town. And, you know, that's just nuts.
Yeah, and, and we don't have street lights, street lights in town, obviously, so that, that, that's another issue, I think, is that the visibility at times, especially down on the east end, east end of town, there's a lot of dark clothing. That's the first thing you notice. You go through town at night, there's people down there in dark clothing. They're very difficult to see.
And so the idea behind it is if we have one on the west end, one on the east end, we have the stop signs at Cave Creek and Schoolhouse, and we have one in the middle over by Kiwanis, then we have three opportunities to slow them down.
Other, other questions from council?
I have, I have a question. I'm just wondering, we, we were using the MAG studies because that equates to dollars. Am I clear on that?
The MAG studies were performed, they were requested. We had a pedestrian safety questions that arose in council. And we looked at, we did an interim study where we put up the shark teeth in front of the crosswalks. We repainted all the crosswalks, and then we put up the gateway treatment, which was a lane delineator, the white sticks that went vertical that, that went up, and those had been recommended. They did a little bit for traffic, but not much. They were more to highlight the fact that there's a crosswalk there and watch out for people. We put up the crosswalk signs. Eventually, they became sort of a target practice for those who wanted to set their big trucks on them and spin them out. So when we did the slurry seal, we took them, we took them out and we did not reinstall them. But what we'd like to do is to get something that will actually slow down traffic.
But his question was, why was MAG involved?
Oh, because we, because the study, to do the traffic study, MAG produced a study for us. Each of those studies was a fifty thousand dollar study. So that was a hundred thousand, we got a hundred thousand dollars in studies that MAG paid for to do the traffic counts, the pedestrian counts, to go through and look at the alternatives and present them to us. So we did not spend a hundred thousand, we did not spend a hundred thousand on those studies, but MAG did on our behalf.
Were, weren't there some really bad statistics? That, I thought that the reason we did the studies is because we had this sixteen, if I'm remembering correctly, pedestrian vehicle accidents in a five-year period.
We did that as well, because we needed to find out where the, where the accidents had happened to have it looked at, to see what, we were also looking at whether we needed a hawk at Surrey so that we could look at the trails, and that was one of the components that we had looked at. So for traffic warrants for a pedestrian crossing there, there were several things that we combined for the benefit of the town into those studies. We were just getting, we were just kicking off the study, we're in, into our, into our counts, where we were going to have them come out and do the counts, and the counts were two weeks after the big COVID hit and everything shut down. That's when they were scheduled. So we had to delay a year until we recovered our, until we recovered our industry and our commercial back to be looked at.
Well, the reason I asked the question was, if, if MAG is doing this study for us, and they're a credible organization, no doubt about it, is there any opportunity for local, local input? What do our drivers think are, are dangerous locations for pedestrians and such?
Well, certainly, Councilman Elkhma, we, the studies were done, they were completed in twenty-one. So the studies were, the studies were done at that time. So what we're here today is to discuss whether we want to implement those studies and proceed forward with the design of the recommended, or whether the council and the, and the, and the citizens have a different idea of which way we should go with it and how we should proceed. I don't want to spend, you know, the town's money on a design that will never be built. And so, but my recommendation, my strong recommendation is that we go forward with it, because if it doesn't work, just like those white delineators, they can be removed. But we can try them out and see how they're, and see whether we're getting affected change in our speeds. We have measured the speeds prior to the installation of them. What we will be doing is measuring, measuring the speed, continue to measure the speeds after they go in, after they're installed, should you decide to go that way, and see whether we've affected any change and any, affected any measurable change in the character of how our drivers perform over there, or whether we've created any problems for our drivers that they can't live with.
Mayor, if I may. How, there's been some conversations around town. People keep referring to these as speed bumps, which are very aggressive parking lot devices. Would you explain the design and, and what they take into consideration to get the, to achieve the speeds that they're, they're trying to limit the traffic to? So we're not, not making people think that we're going to have to go three miles an hour over something, or we're going to rattle our teeth.
I understand that concern. With a speed bump that you would go through at, in a, you know, mall parking lot, those are designed for about three to five miles an hour to go over them. You go any faster than that, you're going to jostle yourself. A speed hump, which some subdivisions put in, are designed for about ten to fifteen miles an hour. And so everyone slows down and comes to a crawl and doing that. What we're really talking about here are elevated crosswalks. So if you picture the width of a crosswalk, about ten, between ten and twenty feet wide, and then you have, let me go back, if, if I may, to the, oh, it's not there. Thank you. Let me go back to a picture of one. Okay, there's one. So what you have is a standard, a standard crosswalk. Then you have a slope going down that is set at an angle, so that as you rise down, you, you don't have your, you don't have your tires spanning a speed bump like you do where you go roll over, roll over. You're going up, and then you're coming down, sort of like a bridge approach or a ramp, driveway ramp. And so that the speed at thirty miles an hour is something that is very, you know, is perceptible, but it's just really a raised crosswalk. If you get to the, but if you're doing it at fifty miles an hour, you're not going to be as comfortable. And that's, and the striping and everything else, you're going to see, you know, that's where it's going to slow traffic. But again, the design, and that's why we're hiring a firm to design these, is so that they can be done at thirty miles an hour. If they're not correct, then we adjust the, we adjust the entry and exit of the ramp until they are correct.
Yeah, so for total clarification, the angle of that ramp is what there is, what they're setting up to achieve the, the traffic calming effect that they're looking for. And it's, it's specific to a particular, for instance, I believe, speed limit through town is thirty. So if you, if you do it thirty, you're not really going to know what's there. If you're doing thirty-five, maybe you're going to start to feel it.
Correct.
If you're doing sixty, you're really going to know that you did it, because you might need to go get your feelings put back in.
Well, typically, our design speed that we've done for all our, for Cave Creek Road, this is going back to when MAG does, when Maricopa's county, Department of Transportation designed it in the nineties. It was designed for five miles over the posted speed limit. So as you come through town, that was designed at thirty-five miles an hour. So we would set that, probably set that design at thirty-five as a maximum speed that we would want to see the design done for.
All right, thank you.
How, how tall are these? What's the height of the table?
About four inches.
Okay, a typical trailer, as I recall, is eight to nine inches. So the trailer's not going to, my living quarters trailer was eight to nine inches tall, so it's not going to bottom out.
No, and when you're sitting there with a, when you're sitting there figuring what your wheelbase is over that ten to fifteen-foot wide top, with the angle on both sides being that, you, you won't bottom out. Because you won't, you won't, you wouldn't, your wheelbase would not be able to span that, unless you have a really long.
The wheels are, yeah, they're, they're very, very tight. Other questions from council? Okay, there is, anything else from staff?
No, we'll, we'll be, we're ready to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, there's probably, there is public comment on this, so.
Gary Lisenby? You've been counsel. I appreciate you all being here and listening to us all.
Yeah.
My first comment is, I feel like our town My first comment is, I feel like our town has a lot of looky-loos going through town and not paying attention to the road, the speed limit, anything. There's a lot of distractions. So perhaps if we could lower the speed limit, just an option, to twenty-five, that might prevent people from going so fast through town that they're not or that they won't hit a person that's walking in the crosswalk. Um, I have a horse trailer and I know you both have horses. So my horse trailer is thirty-seven feet on the floor. So to cross that would put it within about two inches of, because it has about eight and a half inch clearance to the sewer pipe that hangs down. And that's sitting on gravel right now. So depending on the level surface, I don't know. I would have trouble pulling my little trailer with horses in it because you have to slow down to go over there. You're not going to go whoop-de-whoop over them. Your horses are going to jostle around back there. The potential for them to slip and fall is greater. And I would not appreciate losing a horse to that. Um, the other things I have concern with is why haven't we tried to do what they've done with Harold's and the Roadhouse already with the crosswalk? That seems to work great. When somebody comes and pushes the button, it lights up like a circus out there. You can see the people in the crosswalks. The other crosswalks in town don't have any lighting, nothing. And people don't even know that they're there. You see people crossing from um, Ellen Cantor's Dos to the Frontier Town, and they just walk right across the street right there. They get in the median because they can and you can't see them when you're driving through town. I think our mediums need to be, maybe have more stuff in them so that people don't, it doesn't encourage them to cross into those and then out into traffic. That happens all the time. Um, I just would like to see that we don't add something that we eventually might have to take away. That seems like a waste of money. Start small, maybe a stop sign at those places or the lit up crosswalks like at Harold's and the um, Roadhouse. Um, I also don't ever see anybody enforcing our speed limit going through town. I don't speed because I like to just go along and I'm a looky-loo, basically. So, but people will come by me going at least forty when our speed limit is thirty. I know they're going much faster, they pass me. So nobody's, I've never, I always say, I wish somebody was a policeman around the corner just to get that guy. And they're never there, but I would cheer them if they did. Um, and on the, if you do put in these tables, how does the watershed work off the road?
That's part, can I answer? That's part of the design that we're, why we're having to design, the drainage uh, of the road is important. And so that's one of the considerations in the design is the drainage of the road.
I would just think the water would then run into lots that already have to deal with erosion on their property.
I think your time is, do you have a, want to finish your comments?
Okay, well, a Corvette has four point, or five point three clearance. And that's not counting the nose that sticks out there. Um, the Lamborghinis are close to that as well at six point, six inches. And my horse trailer, like I said, is thirty-seven feet on the floor. So when I'm going over it, it will come down. And if I'm going thirty, like you say, I can, more than likely, there will be a flexion in that onto the speed table. Um, we also have an older car that has very low clearance and I believe it would be under the archaeological preservation. So we don't want to destroy any of that stuff. I thank you for your time and I would strongly oppose these tables.
Thank you.
Charles Spitzer.
Good evening, Charles Spitzer, Cave Creek resident. Councilman McGuire, really good question. Quote, we qualifying criteria, quest for installation and speed cushions on public streets will be considered by a town for the streets meeting all the following criteria. A, the street shall be primarily residential in neighbor nature. That's the first sentence in, in the, in the document for number, for item number eight tonight. Cave Creek Road doesn't meet rule on standards. Quote, page two of the document, that's me, um, the, the Cleveland um, study that you, you asked for, Councilman McGuire. Quote, the city installed speed tables on ten residential streets throughout Cleveland with documented speeding issues, unquote. None of them were arterial. They're all residential with houses. The pictures that they showed in the document that's in your packet shows houses doesn't show arterial at all. Um, liability, it was brought up about horse trailers. I have a car that can't go to the library because it can't get over the speed bump. It's a, the speed bump there is four inches. How many cars come up here in the weekends that are low, low clearance cars? How many motorcycles go over those speed bumps that are low clearance? How many motorcycles do we get here in the springtime? I've driven a couple hundred thousand miles on motorcycles. Hitting something that's, that's raised on a, on a highway at an angle is really dangerous on a motorcycle. Because the front wheel tends to follow sideways. That opens up the, the town to, to liability. I just spent a month in Europe. I spent a month in Europe about every summer for the last twenty years. I can count on the thumbs of one hand, speed tables I've encountered. Here's your alternative that they didn't, they didn't talk about. Almost every roundabout, and there are thousands of them that I've encountered in Europe, all throughout Europe. Every, every roundabout uses slits in the road, rumble strips to alert cars that something's coming up, that you have to do something. They do, they use rumble strips for speed limitations, even on major highways. The only study I found was from Perth, Australia, where they installed rumble strips. They had a, a, a nine percent decrease in fatalities and twenty-five percent decrease in speed. There are many alternatives. Rumble strips are far cheaper, far easier to do to the town and reduce your liability. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you, Spitzer.
Janet Moore.
Janet Moore, Cave Creek resident. I respect your presentation. I'm not an engineer. But when I was seven years old, I was sitting at a place for ice cream, kind of like Big Earl's. And a car was going too fast and couldn't stop. The other cars that were stopped and it ran over me. And it killed my five-year-old little friend. And I'm really sorry because I didn't expect to get emotional up here because it was a long time ago. But my question is, because I've thought about these with the speed bumps, what happens? I mean, they're great for people doing thirty miles an hour, but we're not trying to go after the person doing thirty miles. Now we want to get the person that's speeding. So when they hit these things, are they going to lose control and are they going to go off the road and are they going to hit the bicyclist? Or are they going to hit somebody at Big Earl's? I, I would rather see stop signs and, and it probably is not what other people are going to want to hear. My husband probably would not want to hear this. But I think if you had a stop sign at Rancho Manana, and if you had a stop sign at Galloway Ranch, Galloway Road, and maybe somewhere else down Cave Creek Road, and really slow them down, do you really want to do the um, safety that you're talking about? Or do you want to put Band-Aids on? I mean, is this really going to help? The other thing is too, and, and I know a lot of people are going to get upset with this because we all love our night skies. We have to do something for lighting. I mean, come on, would this poor girl have gotten beaten up if it was brighter on there? I mean, if it's dark and you can't see what's coming, you just have to really, you really have to step up, I think. You either do safety or you don't. And I do agree, something does need to be done. But I, I just don't know if that's going to be it. Thank you.
Thank you.
No additional speakers.
See, we have a number of uh, written comments. First is from uh, Star Thornton in support of the proposal. And she says, I thank you, Mayor and council members for allowing me to give my opinion. I believe our town needs stronger police presence. We need more officers patrol, especially on the weekends. In lieu of adding more police, I'm in favor of the speed tables. Speed tables are a contentious issue at best. People don't like change, me among them. When speed tables were first discussed, I was one hundred percent against them. My horse trailer and truck are fifty-five feet long and I was concerned the horses would be jostled around. I contacted Hal to explain how speed tables work. He explained how the tables are engineered for a specific speed. Then I went online, investigated the merits of the tables to gain as much information as I could to understand how they work. There are speed tables at the Honor Health Hospital that I've driven over and there was no difficulty. I also took the truck and trailer over them with no issues. There are drivers who come into town at a fairly high rate of speed. My guess is between forty to fifty miles per hour. My husband and I sat at local Johnny's on Saturday watching drivers in cars and on bikes, split lanes, tailgate, and in general, drive recklessly. I would love to see a table on Cave Creek Road on the curve at the west end of town to slow drivers. Many of the visitors seem to have the attitude that our place, our town is a place for them to show that they are entitled to misbehave. Frankly, I am tired of visitors not respecting Cave Creek, our home. The next comment is from uh, C, SEMA, Seema Cohen um, Lone Mountain Road. Um, and um, they say, I do not believe speed bumps or tables is a solution. Speeding is not our only problem. People are walking in the middle of the road at night and day. Recent incidents of violent crime, parking is a big problem, lighted crosswalks, especially for night. I have seen personally cars not stopping at the four-way stop at Schoolhouse. We need a law enforcement presence in town. Our town is being disrespected and abused and there seems to be no consequences. This next is from Steve Reich um, over in Rockaway Hills. I oppose adding speed bumps on Cave Creek Road. I would prefer to see more of a sheriff's presence. This is from Richard Conley uh, in support. He would like his comments to be read aloud. Dear council members, regarding the issue of installing, installing speed tables, I hate speed bumps, especially when I'm driving my RV and towing my Jeep. The RV and Jeep combined are forty-five feet long. And the RV, thanks to my late wife, is equipped for social gatherings with a complement of dishes, wine glasses, drink glasses, and a full occu-, occurrencement of kitchen utensils. Speed tables create havoc in a kitchen. In twenty nineteen, the wife and I and the cat packed up for a trip to Maine to see the fall foliage change. In one of the eastern states, it may have been upstate New York or Massachusetts, our GPS took us on an unexpected detour instead of the freeway. We found ourselves in a residential neighborhood on a one-way tree-lined street of nice-to-England homes. We were lost. Worse yet was a street sign warning of speed tables ahead twenty-five miles per hour. I had a destination, needed to get there. My anxiety level was going up. My wife was catching it too, even the cat looked tense. It was expect, it was an unexpected surprise to find that the speed tables weren't too bad. At twenty-five miles per hour is quite easy to maintain speed and get over them. As a result, I still hate speed bumps. However, speed tables are not too bad for the law-abiding driver. I'll take a speed table any day over a speed hump or bump. Yes, I'm okay with speed tables. Uh, Richard lives on Fifty Second Street. Those are four comments. So at this time, we're ready for council discussion of this issue. And uh, I just remind everybody that we're, you're looking for a direction for what?
Correct. We're looking for a direction. We have contracts that were, that the manager could sign, but we want the council's direction on which way to go, whether we, just what the direction is of council.
I have no problem with the blinky lights. I think that's a good idea in those three locations. I really oppose the speed tables. And, you know, I, I go to California every summer. Uh, my wife's from San Diego, so we drive up and down Pacific Highway, Pacific Coast Highway all the time. They have speed tables there. I sat and watched a motorcycle doing about seventy miles an hour. And he got about, it was an Indian motorcycle. I mean, a nice heavy one. He probably got about ten feet in the air before he came back down. I, I'm surprised the guy actually didn't crash. But I look at those speed tables and I just think to myself, I, like you, I have a horse, a horse trailer. The horse trailer is in nineteen ninety-one, uh, and it flexes. I mean, I, the horses wiggle around in there and I'm feeling the flex. And I just think, coming over a four-inch bump like that, I've got about an inch and a half clearance as it is. I can just see the wreck happening now. And I can't wait until we have all these people coming in for Bike Week. We have all these people, you know, coming in at sixty, seventy miles an hour and they're brand new, you know,
Corvettes?
Well, they're brand new cars or whatever because, you know, they want to, they want to be cool. They hit those speed tables and now we're on the hook to pay how much damages. And what happens when they go airborne or they lose control or they smash into one of those buildings that's built right next to the roadway? I really think speed tables are a bad idea.
Other comments?
Well, I, I do have, I, I think we would be better off putting some kind of, of a lighting system that emulates um, emulates um, gas lamp like they do in San Diego and have it on for a period of time. And I also think that an increased police presence, maybe we pay a little bit more money to Maricopa County Sheriff's Office and have a couple people there just wandering around on foot patrol uh, between the bars on the east end, just my personal opinion.
Councilman Roggerton.
Mr. Mayor, um, I thought I had a good idea. I've had a couple of chats with Hal about this and uh, and obviously I'm not a fan of this whole concept. I had suggested to him that the speed tables be made of foam rubber and then painted black. We as residents would know that they're visually suggestive, but all of us could still zoom right through. But Hal didn't seem to want to take that idea. Um, I learned more tonight, I think, really, listening from the variety of comments made, both in writing and in person, then um, then, you know, we've had this presentation before. So, I mean, I'm opposed to speed tables and I won't waste your time given the reasons, but um, since the problem is more complex involving, Dusty had an idea recently that uh, we should have police protection during the high season from Friday at four until Sunday at four. Uh, whatever that would be constructed. You and I have had conversations about uh, local policing versus county contracts and things like that. Uh, I understand pedestrian security and the statistics are impressive in terms of what this allegedly could provide. But we used to have two lanes in Cave Creek and our, from commercial corridor. You have a four-lane divided road, which for most people conditionally is fifty-five miles an hour. The fact that it's our downtown doesn't seem to register with people because most of us, if you don't believe me, drive down Carefree, Cave Creek Road towards Bell Road through a lot of residential neighborhoods and look at your speedometer and I'm probably doing forty-five, fifty, not sure what the speed limit is down there. So once you get that median in four lanes of asphalt, then we added two more lanes of asphalt for the bicycle lanes, which are really parking lanes now, which is another issue. I, I just would gently ask the council, regardless of which way this issue goes, if we could bother Hal to just pull those other traffic studies off the shelf that involved elimination, the downtown corridor parking, particularly off-site parking. Uh, I had made a request if we could try a traffic light at Schoolhouse Road like we have one up on Carefree Highway one summer with oncoming traffic, all done automatically. And I still think that either people, you would like a traffic light at Schoolhouse Road or not. I've been T-bone there. I didn't draw attention to it a few years ago. But why not try out a traffic signal there, even if it's just blinking red in four directions, kind of what Mayor Bunch did for us a few years ago, which I do think made a huge difference. But uh, I would be uh, still in, in support of doing some kind of a test there. And then speed tables in residential areas, uh, boy, if, if the idea weren't bad enough already to take it out in our residential neighborhoods based on a popularity contest. This is not Sun Lakes. This is not uh, Tatum Ranch. We don't have HOAs up here. And without becoming unpleasant, everybody up here used to move here to get away from everything down there. And I appreciate the expertise of the MAG Regional Council in twelve-lane wide freeways and things like that. And I appreciate the expertise of the Mag Regional Council in twelve-lane wide freeways and things like that. But this is what's left of Cave Creek. And, and this is not a suggestion, it's just a trial balloon and you can aim at it, but. Why do we have four lanes in downtown Cave Creek? If it's for traffic, then what do you expect the result is going to be when you went from two lanes to four lanes? Plus additional asphalt for bicycle lanes, which are parking lanes. I wish there were the ability to at least study or talk about some different combination for our commercial corridor. And I'm not proposing this, but if you had two lanes for traffic, again, and two lanes for non-vehicular entrance. Strollers, bicycles, walking, whatever. The original intent was the bicycle lane in Cave Creek was never intended to be adjacent to the asphalt road. We'd always talked about it being off the road and meandering elsewhere, so. It may be a little late to do a lot of this stuff. It's forty years after a lot of this stuff was set down, but um. I just don't think the speed tables. Are a holistic answer or sufficient answer for the larger issues that we have. And uh and just in closing, just not to take too much time, but we probably need to stay, take a look at off-site parking. And whether that means a bond and we do a site and we do it in a way that's decorative for the community and be used for special events. But we need to know how many parking places we have on private property. We need to know how many we have on public property. We probably need to take a look at, like everybody else, Scottsdale and so forth. Of what should we as a host provide for visitors and guests for parking? And those are drunk walks. Those are not crosswalks. They're up there for a reason. They're, they were agitated for. But if that's not a correct assessment by me, then why was the testimony regarding the dark crosswalks? Even at Schoolhouse Road and Spur Cross. They were not really given the same treatment as up there, and I know that's more in the entertainment triangle. It's more pedestrian intensive. But um I, if the, if the, if the things go through tonight. I would still beg the council to come back and address the other issues when it's, when the staff would be capable of doing that. But if it's not supported this evening, I would offer that this is an opportunity to take a look at some other alternatives. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, for the time.
Other comments?
I have, I have a, a couple of comments. Um. I'm, I'm really having trouble um moving to a decision to um. Put speed tables uh on our main, on our main street. And I know Hal and. And staff have been patient with trying. Painted designs and little plastic sticks and, I mean, you guys have tried a number of things. But um I really resonate with the idea. That if we had a stop sign at the west end of town, Rancho Mangan would be fine. That would um set a standard. In this town, we're gonna slow down and stop and look around a little bit. Um and I, so I think a series of stop signs would make some sense. Um I like the idea of the flashing crosswalk uh signals. I know that they work um. And, and as much as I don't care for the bright light in the middle of the night, uh I think that is a safety issue that's important. Uh and then uh Tom's comment about. One lane in each direction, one traffic lane in each direction. I think that's something that we should look at in a, in a temporary way. Let's try it for. Uh a season and see what people think. I think we gain a slower transition through town. And I think we gain parking, parking spots that uh would run from one end to town to the other, so. Those are my thoughts. I appreciate you hearing them.
This is, this is Cave Creek. And I think that our residents. Could have problem with this. I'd rather see a speed table, put, for example, on Spur Cross Road, so people can have that experience. This may be a bridge too far at this point.
Well, I'm gonna go against the flow here because I'll tell you what, this absolutely the, when I spent the, the eighteen years that I've been. Sitting up here, I've, I've watched the, the traffic through town. Yeah, we went to, we went to two lanes based on a study by, by Mag years ago, two lanes east direction. Um the, if I'm not mistaken, uh Marshall uh did not, Mark Bradshaw do a fundraiser for that lighted uh crosswalk up there at uh. At um uh Road, Roadhouse and between Roadhouse and Harrell's, and we didn't actually pay for it ourselves, if I remember correctly.
The local businesses spearheaded by Mark Bradshaw did raise money for it. I believe that we did pay money as well, though.
I think we installed.
Partnership, if I believe correctly.
Yeah, yeah, there was a partnership there, which is why it was there, done by those, by those, you know, as, as far as, as. Uh you know, our, our, our chief job is, is, is representatives of, of the community is, is for, for the health, safety, and welfare. Of the residents and, and the, and the people who visit. Um when you've got people going through town, they're doing, you know, the speed limit's thirty. If they're doing thirty-five, I can see them letting that slide. The speed limit's fifty or is, is thirty, and they're doing forty-five or fifty and putting people at danger. We've had people hitting that, in that lighted crosswalk up there. We had, we had someone that uh had serious injuries in there, and I believe the light was flashing. Uh when, when they were hit. Um. Anything we can do to slow the overall speed of traffic, I think is, is probably well worthwhile. Uh as a, as an operator of a motor vehicle, there, there used to be a, a term that was used by law enforcement. I think I had one of those ticket one time, something about. Safe and prudent. If you're, if your trailer is gonna bottom out or gonna be a problem at thirty, then slow down to fifteen. It's better than having to come to a complete stop. It's not gonna, it's not gonna kill you. It's not gonna kill your horses to do that. I think we do definitely need to do something about the speed through town because it is, it is a danger. To the red, we, we're playing, we're playing Frogger with the tourists. It's not a good thing. I'm old, so some of you may not know Frogger. Well, everybody here knows what Frogger is. Um I, I wholeheartedly support the, the, the lights and the tables, uh because I think, I think it's, it's. You can have four deputies sitting in town running radar. And you're not gonna catch all the speeders, because at some point, all four of those deputies are gonna be busy. We've got to do something. It's our responsibility. Uh as, as leader of the community to, to. Solve this issue. So all I got to say about that.
It's a very hard decision. It sounds to me like our community is not ready for this step. And I also think that um I'm hearing we need greater police presence for a multitude of reasons. Uh so I think that we should spend the money in other ways that may be more effective.
When uh there is an element of lawlessness when you come to Cave Creek, I, I, there, seriously. Uh you can see it with the uh, the noise, uh the uh. Goings on at night and uh. You know, but I think we all know what I'm talking about here. And we, we've got to get that stopped. We have got to get where people behave themselves and as many as possible behave responsibly, although there are gonna be people who behave irresponsibly. And there's no way we can prevent that. The um, we've talked tonight about all the problems with speed tables. And I think there's been far, far too little discussion of how we're gonna solve the human issue of people getting hit by cars. Killed by cars and the human cost of that. I don't, I think we've had ninety percent of the discussion has been on the inconvenience as opposed to the. Uh human cost of this. Um you can see in every traffic study, I'm down at Mag once a month, and you can see um everywhere that. Uh inconvenience is becoming the name of the game in roads. Uh the Mag engineers, but everywhere you look. The Carefree and Tom Darlington. That's uh you're zigzagging in and out there with some painted lines. You have no idea why those painted lines are there. They've gone down. Uh to one lane and they have traffic circles and things, and a thirty mile an hour speed limit, but not nearly the pedestrian traffic. Uh we started these studies because we have terrible records in pedestrian safety. And um it, it really is time to, for the council. To do its management responsibilities and give staff a clear direction on where to go. I hope we can do that tonight. If we haven't, then we haven't done our job. There is a lot of irresponsibility. Pedestrians walking across the street, vehicles doing things, but we've got to protect them. From themselves, if nothing else, and engineer out to the extent we can. The hazards that we have right now with our current uh traffic outline. Uh even the, the drunken, distracted visitors deserve protection. So um the, the uh, the cost of an officer's two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And they do not catch everybody. We've got thirty-seven square miles in town. People come through one time, active responsibly, and leave. You never see them again. What are the chances of being caught? Zero. Very close to zero. So I, I don't think we can afford the um. The extra cost of officers, and I don't think it'd be effective unless we uh put in, you know, speed cameras. Only put speed cameras in. That, but there again, the marshal tells me uh when I, we talked about this. So a police officer has to look at every one of those pictures and approve the tickets and all that sort of thing, too. So um. There may be some better ideas. I kinda like going. Restricting the, the, the road to, to one lane at times. I don't know what the traffic, if, if we can support the traffic, maybe the traffic go around if we do that. But um. Uh I, I'm definitely in favor of the lighted uh crosswalks. Uh because uh. Those, especially at night, and they ought to be, and they are in the areas where people cross the street at night. That's just, we don't have streetlights, so to me, that is uh, I hope it's slam dunk for everybody. Um I, I, I'm ready to go with the speed tables because of the speed and the, and the chances it's going to keep someone from being killed. So um. With that, I guess we are ready to vote.
We need a motion.
Yeah, well, yeah, we need a motion first, so um and I, I just in order uh. Uh yeah, let's, let's go ahead with the motion. You wanna make it?
Yeah, I can do that. Uh let's see here. Motion to authorize or to, to direct staff to enter into a design contract for the three elevated pedestrian crosswalks and rectangular rapid flashing beacons. As recommended by staff.
I'll second that. So um let's have a roll call vote on this, Teresa, please.
Can we make an amended motion?
Yes, you can. You can amend it, and then we have to decide between the two.
I would like it so we only look at the rectangular lights, not the speed tables. So I move that, that we strike the word, strike the speed tables off of the direction to staff.
That would be another motion, actually. Uh if this one fails, then we move on to another, if I understand.
Rose, if yours, yours isn't consistent with the primary, so you've got, you, 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 so you need.
I would, I would like the primary motion amended to remove the speed tables.
That, that is, that is problematic procedure.
That would work.
That one, one can. Now we have to decide between the, the two, so. Uh we have to, there is a discussion on, on the amended motion. On, on the, on the motion to amend.
Can I just ask what we're voting on? Because I, I think I know, but I wanna make sure.
We're not voting yet. We're just, we're, we're gonna discuss.
Is this a, is this a subject of motion or an amendment to the?
This is an amendment.
This is a amendment motion.
Okay.
But virtually would change the motion.
Yeah.
That's why I was, I thought it is.
Yeah, I amended the motion to remove the speed table essentially, so we would.
Yeah, so we, we have a motion and a second, so now we're gonna just, if there is any discussion on his motion. Uh first of all, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Second, okay. So now we're, is, is there any discussion on the amended, on, on Dusty's amended motion?
I just, I just really think that the flashing lights on the crosswalks are an important step that we haven't tried well. We've got it up, up, what, in two places in town, and those are weak. They're not bright. They're, they're weak. And I'd really like to see um a standard across town with those flashing crosswalk uh signals.
Okay, uh any other comments on Dusty's amendment?
Yeah, I would like to say that that does absolutely nothing to address the speed issue.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with, I agree with.
If we put stop signs in, it's a simple solution to the speed issue. And put a stoplight at, at the Spur Cross. Now, that's not part of this motion, but that's something else that I'd like.
Get organized here and get one thing on the table at a time. We've got the motion on, your motion's on.
My motion's on.
So uh.
I have, I just a comment that I don't think it does absolutely nothing. I think that if there's a person in the crosswalk who lights it up, then they're going to have to stop. So my question, though, was if we do not do the speed tables. Would we have extra money then to light up all the other crosswalks?
Um Vice Mayor, the uh rapid flashing beacons are approximately a hundred thousand dollars apiece. The speed tables are about fifteen thousand dollars apiece, so you will not. You'll pick up half as, half a crossing um by deleting the speed tables.
And how much money do we currently have in the bank?
Not my end question to answer.
Well, okay, let's work into your point.
Okay, so um, so listen, we're gonna vote now on, on Dusty's amendment, whether that's the one that goes forward. If the answer is no, then the, if, if it, if it passes. Then that is the, what we're gonna be voting on. And the, and the original, the original motion will be dead at that point. Did we understand? Okay, so now we're voting on Dusty's amendment. To put in only the lighted crosswalks, the three lighted crosswalks as a direction stat.
Yeah, the, the rectangular flashing.
Mayor, I think the amendment is to delete the table, not amend, then you're gonna vote on what has amended. So you, you're gonna vote on an amendment to delete the tables, and then you're gonna vote on the amended motion, which would be the lights. Right now, you have a motion on the floor, the lights and tables. You're gonna have a, a motion to amend to delete, to delete the, the tables. That's what you're voting on right now.
Right, right.
Right, so it's just to delete the speed tables this time.
Right. Okay, so let's have a roll call vote on deleting the speed tables from the recommended here, speed tables and lighted.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilmember Ogerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
No.
Councilmember Alkma?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Um yes, to deleting the speed tables.
Vice Mayor Ray?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
No, so the, the motion carries five-two, so we're going forward with the lighted and the leaving.
We have to vote on the lighting.
No, I haven't got lighting.
We have, we have, we have to vote on the.
Oh, I see, I see, I see, okay. So I. Then let's make a motion that.
I, I move that we, we, we vote on, on.
It's on the table. What you, you all have to do is vote now.
We just have.
Early, early vote that's been amended, now you're gonna vote on the amended motion.
Okay, so now we're, now we have a motion to put in the.
Lighted crosswalk.
The lighted crosswalks, the three of them. Uh roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Ogerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
No.
Councilmember Alkma?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ray?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Passes six to one. Um so that is your direction.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Could I ask, could I ask, could we at some point uh put on adding stop signs and a stoplight downtown to see if that'll work at some point? Uh just add, add it to a future agenda.
Well, we just, we just had that. Didn't we have uh the councilwoman from?
Yes, we did uh have the uh, we did a warrant study because traffic signals and traffic lights require a warrant study to be done. And they did not meet warrant. Uh so we did have those uh studies that we presented to the council in May.
A warrant study? That means that we can't get other people's money, right? But we could still do it ourselves?
No, it means that um, that to do so against a warrant would put you at, um, I would ask the. Town attorney, but to do something against a warrant would put you at a liability if something happened. That you did a, that you implemented a, a device that didn't meet warrant.
Is there warrant? What's, what drives a warrant? Is that a, a technical?
Yeah, it's a traffic study that was done um where they looked at the amount of traffic, what would happen to the level of service on the roadway. And those were presented to council in May, I believe.
That seems counterintuitive to me. If you put stop signs in place, people generally slow down and stop. I mean, it. Certainly doesn't happen at, at the corner of Schoolhouse and, and Cave Creek Road, but most people stop at stop signs. That would slow traffic down?
We're not engineers. Why do we, why do we?
We'll get back to you. If the engineers are telling us it's unsafe, we need to, we need to check it out.
Again, this was the, what was presented, yeah, by.
We'll get back.
Yeah, we will. Thank you.
Okay, um. Staff, is there anything else you need? Are you ready to proceed?
No, we'll go ahead and get the contract. We had a separate contract done for the. Uh and we will get that contract uh with the manager to get issued.
Okay, thank you, Hal. I think it was a really good discussion. You did a nice job on this.
Mayor, I could use about a. Mayor, I could use about a five minute.
Uh we're gonna take a five minute break. It will be reconvene at eight fifty. Okay, the meeting is now called to order. Uh we're now on, uh we've taken care of item seven. We're now item three. It's a resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona. Authorization the mayor to execute on behalf of the town a construction services C M A R contract with F C I Constructors Incorporated regarding the remodel and renovation for the town of Cave Creek Fire Station number one located thirty seven four oh two North Cave Creek Road, Cave Creek, Arizona, eight five three three one for an amount up to four million nine hundred ninety eight thousand six hundred and ninety two dollars. Presented by the Director of Community Risk Reduction.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, I'm happy to be here tonight. Um I do need to do a couple of introductions real quick. Um from the architectural firm, we have Gerald Adams and Xavier Vera here. From the contracting firm F C I, we have our project manager Brian Cornford. And uh our pro or our pre-construction managers, Anthony Haber Camp and Kevin Wang. All these folks have been working extremely hard with me to come up with this final contract and these final prices and what we've done. Um we've talked about this several times. I've been before you several times. Um we have a quick little PowerPoint that I just wanna put up as we go through. Um this is the design of the station. Hasn't changed much since we first talked about it. Um basically, what we're doing is we are taking the fire station um that's there now, which is um the living quarters. It was, it's currently gonna be about fifty five hundred square feet, and we're adding on the bays of about four thousand square feet. The existing footprint is not changing with the exception of that's the footprint. It's a very tight site, so we had to be real careful on how we designed it to be able to get the trucks and the vehicles and everybody in, but we're gonna use every bit of that site. But this is the footprint of the station and really the only changes to the existing. Is there a light on this? It won't show, okay. Um anyway, you, the very front entrance you see was squared off. That used to be in triangle. And there's a additional um ADA bathroom that we added to. Other than that, the footprint of the station has not changed with the exception of the addition of the bays where we're gonna put the trucks and the equipment. So that's.
Is is the front entrance at the bottom of this diagram?
The front entrance is the bottom of the the diagram, yes. There's a little front patio there, then there's the two entrances there. Right now, that's if you drive by the station, that's the big angle that goes across. It's a really weird design for the station. All we did was square that off and make an entryway into the station is all we did. We did not add a um a lot of square footage or hardly any square footage to the existing station. What we did do was where you drive through your car wash, which and where we're putting the trucks. Um that has now turned into the, if you look on your design there, that's now the bays or the uh the bunk rooms and and uh office space that we've uh turned that into. So anyway, we um we worked on this very hard. We did uh as was uh recommended by council. We did pre-submital meetings on eight twenty two with uh Luke and and Ben and made sure that what we were doing, met all the count, all the codes of the town. Um we submitted the plans, actually, on October twelfth. They're in right now, being reviewed. Um we're, we believe that we're gonna come out and get our permit for that. Um everything will be done to code. Um as we talked about previously, we did everything we could to reduce the price of this station for the town as best as we could. Even going through um sixty to eighty percent plans with what we called value engineering, and we went through everything. We looked at um over forty five to fifty items that we specifically pulled out of the plans and looked at to see if we could cut costs. Um and we still came up with the price that you're seeing and I'm asking for today. But um just so that you know, and so the 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 community knows, the price per square foot of this remodel is coming in just about half of what the rest of the valley is paying for fire stations. So we've, we've done a whole lot of work. We've reduced the cost quite a bit. We don't have anything that's real out of, out of line or real expensive. I know you can drive around and see some fire stations that are a little bit crazy. This is not, this is to provide a um a nice place for our firefighters in spite of what the marshal might wanna say for us. We we want a nice place for our folks to protect us, and we do need to upgrade this facility quite a bit. Um with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. There's an awful lot of information in your packets. Um but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them for me.
I got one. Does uh does this price include in the interior furnishings?
Um Mayor and Councilman Bunch, no, it does not, but we already have most of that. We have all the bunks already. We have uh a lot of the appliances already that we bought when we first bought the station, so.
The appliance I'm particularly interested in is the the one that uh that cleans the turnouts and gets all the carcinogens off of them.
That's a washing machine, and we'll be taking care of that.
It's it's good, it's the good ones?
Yes.
Cause I remember when you first moved in there, we was concerned about that as well.
But the new, the new design, the new plumbing will give us the spaces that we need for all of that kinda stuff.
Okay.
Um and the price that you're looking at is the um guaranteed maximum price for the construction. And then we will take care of what we don't have, which we already have almost all the equipment for the trucks. We already have all the equipment for the station. Um we have a lot of that stuff. We have the chairs for the folks. We have the bunkers for the folks. We have the lockers already. Um that will all be saved. We will pull all that out. That'll all be saved and re-put back, repurposed back into the station. Everything we can repurpose from repurpose.
Is that addition block?
Um part of it is, yes.
Yeah, cause you you can get some pretty cheap block layers from Sonora that President let up here.
We, we did actually price out um making the bays metal bays, but by the time we re-engineered and did everything, it would cost us more to turn the bays into metal bays as opposed to just match the station.
Right, thank you.
Um assuming that we approve this expenditure tonight, when will construction begin?
If the uh I'm sorry, Mayor and Vice Mayor, if the council approves this tonight, um there's a term that we use that's called um oh jeez, I forgot it already, um notice to proceed. Thank you. The notice to proceed will go to F C I this week, and then it they'll already start getting ready, all their equipment ready to start doing it. So probably start either the end of November or the first of December.
And then how long will it take?
And this is scheduled for anywhere from ten to twelve months at the maximum, but it'll be done within a year. That's the guaranteed uh timelines from the notice to proceed. It starts at the time they get the notice to proceed from us.
And then how do we operate in the interim?
Um if you've driven by uh the station lately, you'll notice that we're taking over part of the easement. It's on the south side off of Blue Ridge. There's a very wide easement there. It's a sixty foot easement. Um we've got a temporary use permit and put in, and we were putting in a temporary facility. It's a three bedroom mobile home that the folks will live in on site for the next year while we give the facility to the contractors to F C I to take care of. Uh when we looked at all this, if we were able to do this as one shot, if we were able to do it as here's the final plans, here's the the whole package. Here, we're gonna give you the station to rebuild. It's much, much quicker and it costs less money to save the town quite a bit of money by doing it all at once. The issue that we had was where are we gonna put the folks? And we were able to to fit it at that easement over there. So if you take a look, you'll see we will, um the mobile home is owned by Daisy Mountain Fire. We will, has been used before. We will upgrade it just a little bit to make it um a nice place for the the guys and gals that work for it and their force.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
I'm assuming it'll pass the fire safety inspection, right?
The station, both will. Everything will be, everything will have a permit. All have permits, yes.
Okay, there is public comment on this.
Have no one wish you to speak?
No, no one wishes to speak? Uh then we are ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve Resolution R two oh two three dash twenty one. Resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona. Authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the town a construction services C M A R contract with F C I Constructors, Inc. Regarding the remodel and renovation for the town of Cave Creek Fire Station number one located at three seven four zero two North Cave Creek Road, Cave Creek, Arizona, eight five three three one for an amount up to four million nine hundred ninety eight thousand six hundred ninety two dollars.
Second.
You have the motion?
Congratulations on a job well done. We're looking forward to it getting underway.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council for your support. This is a I think I've mentioned it before. This is a project that you'll be proud of. With the design and the uh construction of this will make the town very proud, I believe.
You had the second?
No, I just think uh think it's it's right on track and it's where it should be, and I appreciate you doing the value engineering.
Other comments from council?
We're looking in the not too distant future at building another fire station out at the west end of town, so uh no, that's not true.
Uh no, Mayor and Councilman McGuire, the I G A with Daisy Mountain um was uh adjusted as we worked through that whole I G A process. Daisy Mountain will, has bought the property at Twenty Fourth and Cloud already. And they will go into design and construction of the facility. They will be responsible for uh building the facility.
And paying for it.
And paying for it. And once all that's done, and actually, they will buy the first fire engine that goes in there also. And the I G A um in essence basically says we will pay for half of the operating cost of that station, which is half of the firefighters and half of the operating cost. And then in about ten years, the town will be responsible to replace the engine that they're buying for that station.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Yeah, it's a shame, you know, without the uh, well, I'm I'm not gonna go there. It would have been about uh four point one five million uh in January of twenty twenty one, and now it's almost five.
Okay, uh with that, this is a financial, so we'll have a roll call.
Councilmember Augerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Alkma?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ray?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. The ayes have it, seven zero. Got your fire station.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
We're on to uh item number four, council discussion approval of first reading of ordinance oh twenty twenty three dash zero seven, an ordinance of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the town Cave Creek Town Code. Title five, Public Works, Chapter fifty two Water, Section fifty two dot six oh one Creation. Fifty two dot six oh two Functions and Purposes. Uh fifty two dot six oh three Membership Composition Terms and Qualifications. Fifty two dot six oh four Committee Organization. Fifty two dot six oh five Committee Reports. Fifty two six oh six Limitations of Powers, presented by the Utilities Director.
Evening, Mayor and Council. So what this is really trying to get the uh distill that down is that we're looking at the uh, what was the Citizens Utility Advisory Committee? That was created back in um in two thousand and seven when the town bought the two water companies, Desert Hills Water and Cave Creek Water. So it's a committee uh to provide some oversight. Initially, it actually was a committee that was requested by the Corporation Commission when the town took over operations. It's specifically Desert Hills. There was concern that there wasn't gonna be oversight or a way for the citizens, uh the non-citizens of Cave Creek to actually uh uh participate in the operation of the facilities or the utility. So we refer to it uh commonly as the W A C, since I've been here four and a half years, uh Citizens Water Advisory Committee or the Water Advisory Committee, the W A C. Um it's gone through a couple of um changes since being created in in two thousand and seven, two thousand and thirteen. There was amendment to change the number of memberships. Originally, it had ten members. It got uh lowered to seven members. Uh in twenty twenty, we actually modified it uh a little bit more and actually created a wastewater subcommittee just uh clarify what was uh the um operational parameters of the of the group. What we're looking to do now is redo uh to to revision what the Water Advisory Committee and actually change the name. Um one of the things we're doing, the integrated utility master plan. We're calling it that because we're actually looking at all the water uh systems for the town, including wastewater. So we're actually looking at changing the name from the Citizens Water Advisory Committee to the Utility Advisory Committee. Um we wanted to eliminate the wastewater subcommittee. That was actually uh clunky, I guess, to say the least, uh when we actually envisioned it. Uh we we thought it was gonna be a good idea, but then we actually came to uh to implementing that. It was a little clunky and the number of uh people that were on the committee and how we could uh handle that. And actually, uh for the last year, we have not actually had a Water Advisory Committee meeting because we actually haven't had participation. So one thing we wanted to do is to revision uh what we're, the committee can do and really refocus. Um we're trying to focus the efforts on community outreach, conservation, protection, enhancing of our water resources. That's one of the main goals of our new utility master plan. As we look forward, we're gonna have some some stress points in the town's water resources. We're looking to have our citizens help us uh uh in that uh um helping us preserve and enhance our water resources, and that's both water and wastewater. Our wastewater is something we consider a true effluent is actually a water resource. And I mentioned every time I come up here in the quarterly meetings, we do have our challenges with our deliveries to, say, Rancho Minyana. Um and what we can do with our wastewater effluent, but that's something we'd like to get the community more involved with. So while the topic and while the ordinance uh touches, there's seven, six different sections of town code that we're looking to amend. Um it it sounds like a lot, because in fact it is, but we're touching just all the the sections that the uh made up, the Citizens Water Advisory Committee. Uh attached to the ordinance itself is actually the text, uh blue line text that shows the additions and revisions. Does look like we're changing a lot, but then I think attached to um as Exhibit A to the um Council Action Report is the more streamlined version. We did that partly just to make it read more more succinctly, so people can understand what we're trying to accomplish with this change. So um one of the things is we're also looking to change like the number of meetings. Instead of meeting monthly, we'll just meet at least um twice a year, if not more, depending on the committee's uh engagement, what they think they can do. Um again, combining water and wastewater into one one uh uh role, I think will be simpler to administer both as a committee and actually just by staff, try to to staff that. Um and with that, I can answer any questions. Again, it is something that we think will help streamline and reinvigorate the uh the citizens to help us uh move forward with the town's water resources and managing the town's water resources.
I have something on fifty two dot six oh three B term. Uh the term of each member shall be two years and end on December thirty first. Would you be objective if we added in there four words in a sentence that says terms will be staggered? Shouldn't we stagger the terms for the having entire change out?
Uh that's your reason why we couldn't?
Would would you object to that?
You talking about four year terms?
Two, two year terms, but staggering. So every December, you'd apply two or three. Just just for continuity purposes.
Yeah, and actually, since I've been on board, uh because of people rolling on and off the committee, we sort of had inherently staggered terms. Putting it into code is not a bad thing.
Do we need it, uh counselor? Could they say?
Problem is, it's complicated. If you say stagger, then you're gonna have to have the first ones have one year, you you're gonna, what you could say is upon the first, two of the first five will have a one year term. That was, that was the way.
What 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 if we just left it out and and asked staff to stagger?
That would be the easiest.
Okay, let's
Okay, yes.
Remove my comment.
Okay.
Questions for that? Counsel done?
I I do.
Yes.
I need your very candid opinion on the success of this committee. What do you see going forward in their purpose and the results that they can accomplish? I mean, does it really help you in your work?
I think if we really refocus them on the outreach efforts and conservation efforts, that could be another arm. Uh you know, we have limited staff resources in the town. That would be helpful. It was challenging um when we were doing detailed reviews of the capital improvement program, to be honest. And that just took a lot of staff time, staff resource time, specifically myself, and then, you know, the limited staff that we do have to do that. But I do believe um moving forward, the town has some um hard decisions to make about our water resources. And it'd be nice to have the community involved in those decisions and and doing the outreach. Uh one of the main things for uh our water resources is conserving that and to be more efficient with the usage and and having people who are committed to that and understand it, because we can present the bigger picture ideas to them, more details than we can just say a general meeting. Um that would be good. It'd become an advocacy for us, I believe, and I think it would be beneficial. But we did have a burden when we were running it monthly. That took a lot of staff time to, you know, put together the agenda, the minutes and and uh you proposed the information, gathered the information. It was a, it was a bit of a burden with limited staff resources that we have. Um but if we're dealing with less technical and again, more of an outreach and gathering of ideas and helping uh uh move it move the town's water resources forward, I think, I do think that's a good thing for the town.
I think it absolutely has to be in benefit to you and your team rather than a detraction. Um and so I I I would like you to make sure that that doesn't happen in the detraction, that it's a benefit to you and and the organization.
I appreciate that, but I do think the way it's been structured now, I do think we'll we'll move in a much better direction for us. Um, and with staff resources, again, um, uh, about to announce this, that, you know, in the next upcoming month, we're planning to bring on a new deputy director position to help out. And move some stuff forward. And then we're looking at, and obviously our staffing resources throughout. We've been struggling with staff turnover, which has been a struggle just in our operational groups. But, you know, uh, the one main takeaway I have from the, the master plan work we've done to date, and it's not completed, is that we really need to be looking forward. There, there's some decision points in the next few years that are big decisions for this town to make in regards to water resources, water services, wastewater services. So.
Just finally, I just want to emphasize, of course, I'm, I'm always in favor of having, um, voices from the community. Express themselves and be a part of our decision making. It just can't be a burden to the staff as well. It, it has to be well organized and well run.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, your, your point is a good one. That's exactly what these changes make. The WAC was a vestige of the ACC Order, and it actually, it actually competed with them. To work to get recommendation due was completely independent. All these changes make them work through staff. So this is, this is a great step forward. And I think, given what this council has done on drought management, I think this, and what you're about to do addressing water, this will give you. Group, you can reach out to your citizens and Sean won't let them run afar. I mean, but currently in your code, they could actually task staff. And this gets away from that.
Very good. Thank you.
Um, my hearing's not what it used to be, so I'm not sure I heard everything you said, Sean, but, uh. Uh, aren't we still required by the Corporation Commission to have this? So that's the other thing. I mean, no matter what we think here, as long as we're under the, under their rule.
Your outside water attorney and I disagree on that, and, uh, she thinks that, that. When, when, when in fact they were created, the, the ACC authorized it, and then they lost jurisdiction, but that's, that's really incongruous. What the ACC said was before, we're gonna allow you to purchase the water company. We, we need a vehicle to let the citizens have, have. And I know some of your prior town attorneys agree with me on that. This is a good compromise.
So if, if we do away with the WAC, we can give the water company back to, uh.
We get a refund?
That, that was just a joke.
We have a water resource.
Other, other comments or questions? We're at question phase here. Okay, we're looking for a motion. And I will make it. Uh, we do have public comment on this.
I have no one wishing to speak.
Okay, now make the motion.
Thank you, former mayor Bunch.
You know, I always forgot it.
It's easy.
Motion approved, first reading of ordinance, uh, oh, twenty twenty three dash zero seven, an ordinance of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona. Amending the town of Cave Creek Town Code, Title Five, Public Works, Chapter fifty two, Water Sections. Fifty two dot six oh one Creation, fifty dot six oh two Functions and Purposes. Fifty two dot six oh three Membership Composition Terms and Qualifications. Fifty two dot six oh four Committee Organization. Fifty two dot six oh five Committee Reports and fifty two dot six oh six Limitations of Powers.
Second.
First of all, I want to recognize, uh. Richard Johnson, Alex Madison, who, uh, participated greatly in revamping this, uh, I, the three of us. Worked on this, and I, I just point out, it reduces the number of people. It reduces the scope of the committee by eighty percent. It focuses on things they're gonna have the expertise to do, which is mainly with regard to dealing with the community and, uh, conservation and outreach. And, uh, it dramatically lowers the impact on staff. So it, it really is a, uh, in my view, a home run. And, uh, I called Richard today and, uh, thanked him for his work on this. So, um. With that, the second was down here.
Yeah, it always annoyed me that we had to have it to begin with, because I don't like being told what to do, but, uh, it just makes it better on staff. I'm all for it.
Other comments from council? I, I guess this is a voice vote. Is that right? Because there's no financial. Okay, so, um, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries, seven zero.
We'll be back with the second reading.
Okay.
Uh, the next one is, uh. Number five, council discussion in action to approve a contract with MGC Contractors Incorporated. Utilizing the city of Peoria Contract. Um, pound A, C O N, one fifty one twenty three. To clean the wastewater reclamation facility, W R F Digestor. And repair aeration systems at the town of Cave Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant for an amount up to ninety four thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. So this is a continuation of a project that we started last year with the, uh, at a water reclamation facility. And the, and the treatment basins. Last year, we spent a lot of time actually redoing the aeration, uh, uh, portion of the system. In the main treatment, what we call the SBR basins. Uh, we actually use divers, utilize divers to actually change out the membranes that actually, um, add air to the process, actually move the wastewater around. And actually provide, um, air, oxygen for the biological, um, process that actually happens. We couldn't get this project done last year, so we, we, uh, refunded it this year in the capital program. We, uh, in the financial aspects, we're looking at moving some money from another capital project to, to fully fund this. We've worked with the vendor. Um, Brian, can you go up the slide and show us the location? So the, uh, on, on the east side of the, of the process is actually where the wastewater flow, uh, comes in after it goes through our headworks. Removes the large material that it goes into the treatment basins. So the material that's wasted from the treatment basins goes into these digester basins, then we actually remove that material, and then we condense it, and that gets removed from site. Um, what we're finding is we had an inspection done last year, and there's a lot of, uh, bad material down at the bottom east basin, to the point where the divers couldn't. Couldn't move around the basins in about half of the aeration. Next slide, Brian. Uh, the, the half of these diffusers, which actually provide air for this portion of the treatment, are, are not working functionally. They're actually, uh, they're covered with the material. So this is what the basins looked like in two thousand and ten. They do not look like this anymore, and they won't look like this after the project. But they'll look a lot better than they currently are functioning. So what we need to do is actually go in and remove the material. The problem is, this is a twenty foot deep basin with limited access. That's why we're utilizing a contractor to help us get the work done. The plant staff will reduce the amount of liquid that's actually in the basins themselves, uh, or this basin. And then we'll actually have to remove the material by vectoring it out and then bring it to our landfill. So this contract, we'll pay for that instead of MGC, so it doesn't go through their markups. Uh, MGC is providing the coordination of the removal, and then actually having to do an entry into this, a manned entry, a personal entry into this. To actually clean the basins out and then work on replacing the diffusers. We bought the diffusers actually last year when we bought all the, um, the membrane. Uh, system for the other treatment basin. So these metal diffusers are what's called a Corsair diffuser, but they're stainless steel, they attach on. So we need somebody to, to go down there and, and, uh, reattach the new ones. Our goal is to, to revamp this system and get the material. That's not, uh, what we want the plant out of it. So it's been operation since twenty ten. Um, there's just some material, and this is good practice to get this goods, uh, removed. As well as getting the material that's down there that we know is impacting the process. So with that, we're, we're planning to use, uh, MGC to help us basically augment our staff to get this work done. Expeditiously, and it'd be difficult for our staff to do it. We don't have the resources. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Questions? Seeing none, public comment?
No one wishing to speak?
I'm not surprised that, aren't you, aren't you Tracy? Okay.
So I have a question. Are there job openings for these diving, uh, individuals?
They're actually an interest, uh, we've got to work with them a fair bit. They're actually a good group of people. Um, most of, most of the. I, I give them credit because they're going down in these basins and they're working completely untouched. They cannot see in these basins, our green basins, so.
So I'm not gonna revise my.
I used to scuba dive. You can borrow my regulator.
It's complete dry suit when they're down.
Okay, we're looking for a motion then, so we want to make it?
Well, I'll do it. If you want, motion to approve a contract with MGC Contractors Incorporated, using the city of Peoria Contract. Number A C zero, uh. Oh, N one five one two three, to clean the wastewater reclamation facility, Prince W R F. Those brands, digester and repair aeration systems at the town of Cave Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant for an amount up to ninety four thousand dollars.
Second.
You, 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 you couldn't hear it over here, but my seatmate here suggested we call Mike Rowe with Dirty Jobs to come and, uh, and help out. But, uh, yeah, we have to do it.
This is not one we have a choice on, I don't believe. I don't want.
If, if we don't do it, we're in deep.
So this is financial.
Councilmember Elkma?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Augerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye.
So. We are on to, uh, council number six, council discussion approval of contract with Sunland Asphalt Construction LLC. For the milling and paving projects identified within the town's pavement management program for an amount up to eight hundred and forty one thousand nine hundred and ninety nine dollars.
I'm back. So the town, um, had put together a capital improvement project, project that was, um. Trying to get the most bang for our buck by lumping projects together this year. And, uh, we identified, uh, projects that were of similar ilk and bid them together. Our estimate was nine hundred and twenty four thousand four hundred dollars. And we get, or we received two bids underneath that, two bids over it, so felt pretty good about it. Sunland was the, um, apparent low bidder at eight hundred and forty one thousand and change. Uh, so we recommend approval of that bid.
A question is, we were planning to spend two hundred million, two hundred million, two hundred, two million dollars on, uh, road repairs this year. Is this? Does this complete that?
No, this is the first, this is the first phase. Uh, some of the, some of the two million dollars included like a, uh, the first phase of a traffic signal. That we put in for Cave Creek Road and Schoolhouse in the event that the traffic study didn't come back. But we have other projects that we still are doing. We have one that we ran into some problems with state trust land. But these are all the mill and pave projects.
Okay, so you're grouping them together to get them in big chunks to get a good price.
Where they're similar, where it's similar work, yes. Similar work where you're hiring a contractor that can come in, mill it. Pave it or demolish it and pave it.
Questions?
What happens to the milled material? And I'm thinking particularly on, on Spurcross Road, as you go up to the conservation area. There's some parts of that that are really appear to be resistant to erosion. And there are other parts that are still dusty. Is there opportunity to use these millings there or, or another such place?
Yes, uh, the town actually keeps its own millings. We have stockpiled millings, um, actually when Carefree did all their projects, uh, we were the recipients of over, uh, um. A hundred, uh, cubic yards of, uh, material that had, we had a great big pile, which has gone on to, uh, Morning Star. It's gone on to, uh, Spurcross Road. Uh, we are currently using it on a Royal Road. So yes, we reuse our, uh, millings on our unpaid roads.
So it's, uh, two bangs for the buck?
It is.
I'm on a roll tonight.
Other questions? Hey, this says public comment?
No one wishing.
Public comment. So we're looking for a motion. Since you asked the question, Councilmember McGuire.
No, and I didn't bring my glasses with me tonight, but I'm going to try. Council discussion and direction to staff regarding design authorization for the three. Oh, shops. Yeah, you do it.
Go ahead, Dusty.
I know, council discussion approval of, oh, I'm sorry. Motion to approve a contract with Sunland Asphalt Construction LLC for the milling and paving projects identified within the town's pavement management plant. For an amount up to eight hundred and forty one thousand nine hundred and ninety nine dollars.
Second.
This is financial. Uh, you have comments? Any comments?
No, I think it's, it's, it's needed. Um, I've been hearing complaints about roadways, and I know you've been working on fixing them for a long time.
We're trying.
Dusty, this may not be the first time or the last time you've saved me. Thank you.
Other comments? Being none, this says public comment?
No public comment.
There are none, so we'll have a roll call though then.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Councilmember Augerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Elkma?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We're on to item number eight, council discussion approval resolution, our, our number. Our twenty twenty three dash twenty five, a resolution of the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona. Adopting a neighborhood traffic calming process presented by the town engineer.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, today, we're presenting, we presented a, for discussion only about, uh, a month and a half ago. The neighborhood traffic calming process, uh, which is to give, um. So that we have a process in place when people come to the town and say, we want to put in a, a speed limiting device. Uh, we looked at speed humps and we looked at, uh, speed cushions. After discussion with the, um, our emergency services, we decided only to offer speed cushions. Um, what this does is it identifies, um, and I could, I can bring up the, uh, same. Uh, program that I showed you, the same PowerPoint that I showed you a month and a half ago, if you'd like. But what this does is it identifies a process for those neighborhoods. Who would like to incorporate a traffic calming device within their neighborhoods. And it sets the criteria, it sets the measurables, um, of how it's going to be done. It has a process that is put in place, and then it's, um, up to them to identify the amount of. Or the, to get the, uh, signatures of the required properties. And we used, um, uh, Brian, could you put it up? Because we, we did a sample just to show how it would work. I'm gonna go forward. This is the one that same presentation that we did a month and a half ago. This is what a speed cushion looks like. Uh, a fire truck spans it. Or can go through the open part where cars do not. Uh, this is the process that we're looking at. Uh, the yes, no process as far as how it will work. So we did a sample analysis using Highland Road east of Echo Canyon. Uh, we did a collection of the speed data, which showed that it was, uh, uh, thirteen miles over posted. We went. Anyway, we identified the area of, um, the affected area because. Reasonably or not, that, uh, if you put a speed bump at Echo Canyon or a speed cushion. All those people would have to drive over it. If you moved it back, then less people. But that is why we identified the affected area. And then the neighborhood liaison, which is the people that came to the town, asking for this process to be put in place. Would be responsible for collecting seventy five percent of the affected property owners, the signatures in the, in favor. And a hundred percent of those within a hundred feet of where that would be. You'd also work with the neighborhood liaison to determine where the location would be. So these are, I, these are, it's neighbor, it's neighborhood driven. We would then go through and we, um, assuming they get the seventy five percent, and if they don't get somebody, then their count is a no. So it's not like seventy five percent of those responding, it's seventy five percent of all the property owners, and if they don't respond, it's a no. So it's up to the neighborhood to really want it badly before this would be put into place. And so the boundary or affected areas determined by the town engineer, and that's simply a matter of where they want to put the speed. And are there other alternative routes to get out? Neighborhood liaison and town staff will conduct a review of the possible design locations. So that's, uh, neighborhood input. Uh, locations will be reviewed by public safety to determine if factors exist that would prevent or limit the, the, uh, device installation. Such as when we were looking at fifty second street, because it was a hot, a route to the hospital, it was not, it could not be considered. Uh, neighborhood liaison circulate petition to affected property owners. Petition has agreement to pay for their share of neighborhood funded devices. Um, must be supported by seventy five percent of affected property owners and a hundred percent of adjacent property owners, a hundred feet on each side of the device. Property owners who do not respond to petition are considered as opposed. Ninety days to collect the signatures and signatures verified and submitted to town council for approval of device for both neighborhood and town funded projects. And that's required by our code that you would have the final approval process on it once it comes forward. It's a code. I have it written down. Seventy, section seventy-one oh three is the town code. So I, at that, I'll answer any questions on this process.
And this is based on Fountain Hills?
It's based on Fountain Hills.
Fountain Hills has since the same.
It's almost, with the exception of that they allow speed humps instead of speed cushions and they're only fifty feet of affected area. It's pretty similar.
Congratulations, you're using other people's work.
The only concern I've got is, we don't, you're determining the affected area. I think we ought to have a definition that says what your guidance is for that.
The guidance is those who would, would be forced to go over that speed bump.
Great.
So like on Highland.
Writing. Put it in here.
Why don't we do that? Can we do that tonight and get this off the?
Yeah.
Can we, can we, can we agree on some language, get this moving?
Sure. Whatever.
So what, you, you have a suggestion on the language, Dusty?
Yeah, just the boundary of the affected area shall be determined by anyone who is, who has to use this for ingress or egress.
We can, we can certainly change the, that portion of the text to, to accommodate.
I think that, that's how I would phrase it.
How about the boundary should include all persons who will have to, what's the verb cross?
Ingress or egress.
All residents, not, not persons.
All residents.
Landscapers and, okay, yeah.
We can certainly have that.
Yeah, right, right. How about making property owners?
Alright.
Big property owners.
Oh, I got you, I've been serious, I thought you were joking.
No, no, seriously, you know, you gotta make a property and that, you know, it's, it's representation of being able to participate in the.
They are. It's by, by property, it's one vote per property.
For property, okay, good.
It's not two votes because you, or you have a large family, it's one vote per property and you have to have seventy-five percent of the affected properties.
Whether there's a dwelling on it or not.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Okay, what's that language again?
It's, well, how about the, the, the affected areas should include all, all residents who have to ingress or egress.
From that location. From the, using that speed.
Yeah, using that speed bump.
Traverse the route. Traverse the route, yeah, that's good.
Must utilize, all, all persons who must utilize, is it, is it always on a road?
Yeah, it's always on a road.
The, the road upon which the, on which, what's the, what is it called, a bump, what they call?
It's a speed cushion.
Down. The, 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 the affected area shall include all, all, all properties. All, all rep.
No, all proper, all properties.
All properties, yeah, all properties of. Going through.
Where access is only via the speed bump.
Making this up, you're only applying.
Well, let me, let, let me take a shot at this and motion to approve resolution R twenty-two-three dash twenty-five, a resolution of the town of Cave Creek, Miracle County, Arizona, adopting a neighborhood traffic calming process. The appendix A shall be changed such that the affected area shall include residents, in all residents who ingress or egress over that cushion.
All residents who must or just?
All residents who ingress or egress over that cushion. There has to be some, some degree of judgment, I think, yeah, a little bit. This nails it down.
Yeah. Think you gotta do that.
So the motion's on the table.
Second.
Can we make a properties? How about all properties?
First of all. We have public.
And so the.
Oh, a property?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All, 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 all properties served by the, the, the access upon which the, the speed bump is constructed. All properties served by the acts, served by the certified roadway upon which this speed bump.
Yeah, the, the device is installed.
The, the, the affected area shall include all properties accessed by the roadway upon which the land is constructed.
Okay.
That'll work.
You have that language down?
We'll get it.
Okay. So there is public comment on this, I, have any public comments?
Jody, reasons, sorry, Lezenby was opposed. She's not here.
One who's, she was the lady in the bread that spoke earlier.
Okay, so the motion's on the table, has it been seconded?
Aye, seconded.
Okay, so council comments?
I don't like the idea of this traffic calming device, it's just because of the horse trailer issue, but.
But it's the voice of the people in this case, so that makes the difference.
Well, too sad, that's what all it's worth, I'm sorry, you wanna go in?
Go ahead.
I just think of comments made up here in the last year, Dusty Rhodes said neighbor against neighbor, we treat, but I try to do things that doesn't pit neighbor against neighbor. I hope we don't do speed bumps in our town trails. I just don't think this has any consistency with the character of our community, it doesn't matter if a few people want it. The majority of most neighborhoods will not want it. It's not giving a right to the community to make self-determination is offering a solution that is completely out of the character of the town. I mean, we're just, I mean, with all due respect, I believe we're just urbanizing with every little piece we add to the new complexion of the community. I mean, if this really is something that's a sound policy, why isn't it town wide? Why is it on a selective basis that the people that just got here six months ago from places where this is more common are gonna wanna propose that to their neighborhood? And again, I told you my personal story. I'd be happy to donate seven speed bumps between my house and Spurcross Road, all of which were added by people that came much later than those of us who were there originally. I don't see this as giving the people what they want, I see it as a point of agitation between people who want suburban or urban affectations, just like gated communities and other things that we have consciously worked against all these years up here. And I just feel like we're sliding into solutions that come from regional advisory groups and it, it, I just, you know, I just, it's only expressing regret. I don't plan to support it. It, what was the guy that ran for council, Paul Devendorf, keep it Creaker, how is this keeping it Creaker? It's keeping it Scottsdale and Phoenix, go down Seventh Avenue in the morning if you have to commute instead of using Central. It is a test in patience and steering, that's all I have to say.
And I was gonna say, I really like it that it's a planned ahead setup and I trust the people in Cave Creek to make a decision about what's going on in that prescribed area.
These, these are very different, I, I, I agree with you, Councilman Augerton, that speed bumps that you have to go over and Dusty has to go over are very obtrusive. But these things, these are not nearly as objectionable.
From a concept of self-determination for a neighborhood, I don't think it's bad, but I also think it's a modern day literacy test. It'll never happen.
Why was this proposed, Hal?
Because we've had quite a few communities come in and we do not have neighborhoods. And we do not have a policy in place. So we needed to create a policy, so how do I, how do we get one? Do we petition the council for everyone that we wanna do, or do we have a measurable way of coming in and determining how it will be done? And if you get seventy-five percent of the property owners to agree to something, I mean, I, I'm saying, if you could get seventy-five percent of the people to agree to something, it must be pretty much in demand. But that's why we did it, because we currently don't have a policy. We're, they're coming to count, they've come to council in the past asking for this, but we don't have a traffic calming policy that we could point to. Most communities do have a traffic calming policy that they implement. So this is what we're coming up with. It, the Fountain Hills one seemed to fit our nature better than, say, Miracle County or City of Phoenix or other communities, Scottsdale or other communities that we looked at. The Fountain Hills one required a higher neighborhood participation in it before it could be implemented. It also set a higher speed before the town would have to participate in the cost. So that's why we chose this, this model to present to you so that there could be a way of having a policy in place that, a process and procedure that could be followed. And if they can, if they can meet it, then, then it's something that's probably really needed.
Mr. Mayor, just a question, what do we do if a majority of people that are due to the community, the living in a neighborhood want sidewalks? Street lights? I mean, we do not provide what most people would consider to be a certain base operating standard for residential housing. And yet up here, those things used to be an asset. We've talked about ribbon curves years ago, but yet down by Starbucks in the town, we've got straight curves and sidewalks. I mean, I just, I guess I don't get it, how a few people believe that a speeding problem in their neighborhood would want this as an option on a majority consented basis and have that not become a precedent for, is, is that a leap that's too far? I mean, it just seems like, how about the need of plane protection organs? I don't agree with twelve foot setback or twenty-five percent undisturbed, my ten neighbors agree with me, we want to build pin to pin. I mean, what values do we put in organs and incorporate to stand for something different than right across Carefree Highway from us? And I know I, you know, I'm old and I've been up here too long and so forth, but I just can't believe, I, I seriously can't believe that speed bumps in residential neighborhoods. I mean, I've seen neighborhoods with the signs, pick up after your dog, won't mention any neighborhoods, but it's like, what?
So anyways. I've got one of those signs on my property.
Well, I, I'm a big, both a proponent and, and behind a lot of this and because I get this all the time. I wanna speed bump and then someone else says, I hate speed bumps. And so this is a way to put it into the democratic process, because you have, I, dozens and dozens of people have wanted speed, every time a car speeds, people want speed bumps, if I, if we've put speed bumps everywhere, I've had requests. You wouldn't be able to get anywhere in this town, so this is a compromise that it's a tough bar to pass. I don't think we'll have many speed bumps, and if we do, the people there want them, they're the ones that are affected by it and there's a vote for it. It's a way to serve the people who, who want something. And there's a lot of people who want it, so I'm, I'm gonna support it.
You know, in, in, in my neighborhood, there's people driving, are, are riding their horses all the time and I see people go by them at excessive speeds, so you know, some neighborhoods, you know, I, I never pass a horse doing more than ten or twelve miles an hour and I wave and smile and all that good stuff. But you can spook somebody's horse and get them hurt. And, and if you got a neighborhood that's got a lot of people riding on the side of the road, that might be a good idea to, to, to slow them down at least if they've got no, no courtesy to begin with.
Okay, well, let's have a roll call on this one.
You're gonna need it.
Just shortcut it.
Councilmember Augerton?
Oh, I've gotta think about this one, no.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Elkama?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Roy?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye.
Come out of your neighborhood spending my tires.
Motion passes five two.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, number nine is council, is nine fifteen, so council discussion approval updates to the town of Cave Creek. Code of Conduct presented by the town attorney.
Mayor, members of the council, this was the sort of conduct written in part by members of the council. It was, it was in response to concerns when I identified for you issues that other jurisdictions have had with a far more rigorous mechanism for investigating which employed outside counsel at significant cost. And the utility of this was that it was you policing yourselves, recognizing that the, the remedies are very limited because our process relies on the voters to, to hold you accountable. The only change was that Councilmember Augerton wanted to increase the, the membership from three to five, and that is the only change. And that's what's for you tonight, and I, Councilmember Augerton, do you wanna explain your thoughts around three to five or?
The chair doesn't want me to start a five minute speech, so I'll do it in thirty seconds, Mr. Chairman. With three, under the state's open meeting law, if one person speaks to another, they're in technical violation of that. And practically speaking, I think it's difficult to self-enforce a committee of three. You have a total committee of seven. With five, everybody would serve on the committee except for the person that's the subject of the review. And the mayor could either be a tiebreaker or the mayor could, I mean, if you're pre-selecting this evening who's on the committee, that's something you may wanna consider as well, whether the chair, if it's not on the committee, should be the tiebreaker, if you're chosen to be on the committee, then you would not have that option. My only issue is, and former council member Reg sent a letter to all of us suggesting that we would have two public members.
I'm gonna read that.
Oh, okay, so there's that issue as well, and I'm not for or against that, that's an issue he wanted to raise. The only thing I would urge each of you is that to stick with five, but not the three, just because I think it's problematic, and, and in a small town, we travel in packs. We have a history of breakfasts and lunches where we might have had one too many people there. And you wouldn't want three council members to be on a review committee and all show up for breakfast or lunch and that kind of thing.
Haven't had a significant portion of rewriting this and it existed arriving from about two thousand fifteen or so, then we revised it probably two thousand twenty, twenty-one and added a three person because, and it probably may have been my number. I thought at the time that that would do away with the bureaucracy of having to keep minutes and you, because three people can, can have a conversation about something and to lower the amount of bureaucracy, and so I, I agree, that didn't work because our attorney says, hey, no, no, you have to have minutes. So that bureaucracy argument went out the window. My only, I, I, I don't know why we just don't have all seven, other than someone who would be recused. I mean, because you're gonna have to have one set of minutes and analysis and all the rest with five people, and then you do, go do the same thing with seven, why not just do it one time and do it right with everybody, because you're, you're repeating the whole process, so I'm, at, at some point, I'm gonna make the motion to move it to seven and see if I can get, get a positive.
The only downside.
Yes, I have to have motion first, though.
The only downside to seven is that one of us would automatically be the person.
Oh, no, no necessarily, it, it could be, it could be the commissioners or whack.
Okay.
Yeah.
But if it's on the council, then, then you have a potentially a three to three.
But, but there's no, there's no, there's, there's no.
It's not related to be, you do no council member either, but.
There's no, you don't have any sanctions.
Yeah.
There are, it's essentially a, the only sanction is the publicity and the investigation is the sanction. And so it, it really, the, the voters, the voters have to take some off council, we, we, we can't do that, we have that power. So that's.
Ironically, the one sanction is one of the worst, is you, they're not, they're barred from going to the least training sessions. I mean, that's exactly the opposite, and so this is more, that's why it's unthought and wise to go hire outside council. This is you policing, generally you policing yourself. But there is the issue with the government commission.
But whoever, I mean, if it was someone on council, they have to recuse themselves and, and then the other six would have to do it, and if it was three, three tied, then nothing happens. That's, that was the rules that we operate on.
Or seven if it's a commissioned person and, and then, and then five if it's, if it's council.
But if it's, if, if it's a commissioned person, we have the right to remove him from the.
Yeah, but what, what, it gives you not.
Then you're gonna have to go across this of how you select who's not on. If you go with five, how you, at that time, of the six, who gets, who steps off? Now, some of you may say, I'll be happy to step off, but so I, I think it's better to leave it at seven and sort it out with my vote. But if you're, if you reduce to five, then you gotta have a process for removing the one council.
Okay.
I'm fine with seven.
Okay, so I, I guess. Okay, so I, I guess someone make the motion then that we have existing here and then I plan to make the motion right after that to seven and we can oh, I'm sorry, public comment?
Janet Moore, and then you have Reg.
Oh, yeah, I gotta read Reg's.
Janet Moore. So I think, I think some sort of education needs to be done for the council. Sorry, but I don't think that any of you understand private property rights. I think that when somebody comes forward and pays money and spends a lot of time on the design, I think that you should drive by it. I think you need to read your packet. And it's very evident when I watch the meetings that some of you are not reading your packets and then you turn around and you're voting on things. It's very obvious. Mr. Ogerton, when I presented something, you insulted me. You, you, you completely made up a story after a time when I could even speak. And that was, that was just really awful. I really think that maybe you should look at your tapes and see, and see your actions. Because I used to come and, and watch these meetings all the time before. And then there was a time when we had such a great council that really understood property rights and understood what was going on. But now I feel like I have to watch everything. I really do. And, and I personally, I personally felt so treated so badly and I paid money for that and it's fine. I won't do it now. You won. But I don't think anyone should be treated that way. And I've, and I've shown it to Leo Council and they've agreed with me. They said, I got small-towned out of my own small town. So I didn't mean to get into the personal end of it, but I, I seriously, I'm watching this at home and I know some of you are not reading it. And I know I was told that people didn't go even drive by my, my project. And I was insulted. So the other thing I think is, I don't think it's, you should police yourself. I think you need a couple of members of the public. If there is something against you, one of the members, I think you need somebody in public to be there with you because otherwise what are you doing? You know, oh, I'm meeting you for coffee and you know, you're a nice person, so I'm not, you know. I think you, I think you need to have an outside person and I will offer to be one of those people too. But those are, those are my thoughts. I, because of real estate, because I, because I've sold real estate for forty years, I have followed government. Mr. Ogerton can, can confirm this because he was at AAR and I was at the Scottsdale Area Association of Realtors Government Affairs Committee. And then I've moved on from there. So I understand the workings and public and private property rights and I understand what a council's job is. So anyway, those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
No additional speakers.
We have the comments of Reginald Monachino Desert Creek Lane. He says, I oppose. And his comments are, I suggest the five-member CRB consists of at least two members of the public. The five-member council approach gives the impression of decisions made behind closed doors. A group that investigates itself is not comforting to the public. Let's have a transparent government. So does somebody wanna make the motion then on the, as it exists?
Actually, I have a question at this point in time for the attorney. As, as a full member, aren't we gonna have to do it in public anyway?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So there's no, no behind closed doors or hiding or. Yeah, yeah.
We can't, yeah, that was what killed the three persons was, there's no sense. We, we thought we'd be a, there'd be a committee that would go off and investigate and then present and our, our counselor killed that.
So now we're moving into, now we're moving into full transparency with this one. I'll make that motion. Motion to approve updates to the town of Cave Creek Code of Conduct.
Second.
Alright, now you can do.
Okay, I, I move to, to add this sentence, change the number of members from five to seven. And so I'll need a second.
Second.
You seconded that one?
Yes, sir.
He's just agreeable. He wants to go home, go to bed.
No, no, I mean.
In case you can just, you can just read, you can just move and have a second and you don't have to go through two votes.
Well, we have to get rid of the, the words with five council members. Change that to seven, but of the town council, you need to get rid of the words chosen by through the end of December twenty twenty-three.
Well, that's, that's, we're not on that one. That, that, that one will become, if it's, if it's changed, it's changed.
Seven's fine.
So we have, so the motion on the table is changing from five to seven. Is, is there any further discussion on that? Yes, I'm, I, I moved and, and it was seconded by, by Tom. So we're gonna, we're going to take care of that motion, see whether it passes. So at this point, we call for a voice.
I don't think it, since it was, the second was, the amended was accepted. That same person that seconded, you, you don't only have to vote once, right?
Right, but we have, Rose basically makes a good point. We've gotta do that anyway. And so maybe we ought to clear it up all at once. And so what it would be is Councilmember Ogerton would change his motion to say.
Are you willing to change it?
Oh, yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
There will be established at the first, no.
No, that, the next part, that's the, that's the next item.
No, just say, just take out the first, take out the first, a conduct review board shall be, shall consist of, 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 of all seven members of the council.
That's item ten.
It's item ten. We're on nine still.
We gotta, we gotta change the policy.
Oh, you're wanting to add that to that.
Yeah.
Just add that to the, the motion.
Yeah, you gotta change. Then you gotta say selected by majority vote that comes out. Take out the first sentence is to say the conduct review should well, the councils, the town council so sure was the conduct review.
Yeah.
Yeah, just take out the first sentence.
Okay.
And then where's the part about the conflict of membership?
It's in ten, but if, if we're gonna change nine, then you might as well make the change that we were gonna make in ten. Just start, start with council action needed. Motion to staff the conduct review board at town Cave Creek with all seven council members, period.
Yes, sir, but we need to change, we need on page two ninety-seven to two ninety-nine, the first sentence of five having to come out. Just say, just give the council to town council.
You know, I, I think I wrote some language on that. Yeah, on number five, conduct review boards, I did read the packet. The, the seven members of council shall act as the conduct review board, period. Okay.
And place of the first sentence.
So, so you had the motion, Dusty? No, you have the motion. You will, you wanna amend your motion to this language?
Only if you tell me what to say.
Motion to approve updates to the town of Cave Creek Code of Conduct. Adding the sentence to section five, the seven members of council shall serve as the conduct review board.
If the clerk and the chair will accept that as a motion from myself, I would be happy to make that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Cause it was me.
Wait a second, get a second.
I had, I made the motion. You had the second, yeah.
But this crowd is so old.
I'll change mine of what you said.
I, I believe we beat this to death. Anybody wanna? Let's vote on this. So it's not financial. So all who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number ten is moot at this point. We agree with that? Objection, sir.
Moot table number ten, as it's already been taken care of.
I think we can do, if there's no objections, I think we can do. Alright, so motion adjourned.
Still move.
All who's in favor.
Aye, aye, buddy.